Good evening, everyone. I'm calling tonight's meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board to order. Today is November 25th. It is 6:31, and we are meeting at Falmouth Town Hall. My name is John Drooly. I am the current Chair of the Planning Board. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and is being conducted in accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Please take a moment to silence any mobile devices or electronics to avoid interruptions. Anyone wishing to speak should come to the podium, wait to be recognized by the Chair, and state their name for the record before making remarks. We encourage respectful and constructive dialogue during public comment periods. Thank you. We will now proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. If anyone wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name. All right. Seeing no volunteers, we'll continue to our first hearing for the -- well, we're going to go to minutes first. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the November 4th, 2025, and November 17th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Six oh.
So the first hearing we have tonight is for Bruce Stavala, plan of land to confirm lot lines and obtain the benefit of MGL Chapter 111, Section 127P for property located at 118 Timothy Bourne Cartway. And for the applicant, do we take testimony from applicant for A and R?
You definitely do not need to.
Yeah, okay.
Could you just explain what the law we just quoted, I don't think anyone knows what that, why we're doing this. I think it'd be helpful for everyone to understand.
Sure. So the law that cited in the bylaw is in reference to the septic regulations. So when an applicant files in A and R, they have froze the regulations in place for a period of time for the Board of Health regulations.
It's all zoning, right?
Well, it's specific to just that requirement. As you know, that there are new regulations from the Board of Health that are requiring innovative and alternative septic systems. So folks are finding a way to file so that they can freeze those regulations in place as of today's date.
So today's the last date they can do that, is that?
The regulations have already gone into place on the 15th, but this application was in before that.
Oh, it was in before that. And I was just wondering the timing of it, because, thank you.
Could we ask a further question?
Certainly.
What is the consequence of not approving? If they don't manage to?
If they want to pull a building permit for, say, another bedroom for an ADO or subdivide the property, they would have to then conform to the new septic bylaws, probably denitrification and?
So it's to avoid denitrification?
It freezes the zoning for three years. So if they do something within that three-year period, then they?
Thank you, I just wanted to understand.
Right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Move to endorse?
May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Second on the agenda, Matthew Terry, site plan review application to construct a new 7,475-square-foot light manufacturing warehouse building at 117 Bernard St. Jean Drive. And Mr. Terry for the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Matt Terry with the law firm Abam and Clower here in Falmouth. We were last before this board on October 14th. That was our first site plan review hearing. Subsequent to the October 14th hearing, we'd worked on some revisions to the site plan set in response to comments received during the hearing and from town department referrals. So we've submitted a revised site plan set and also responses to some of the referrals. The engineering department in particular had a number of comments, questions, changes that they wanted to make. So Scott Masili of Longfellow Design Build is here, who's the engineer for the project. He can address any technical questions that are raised. But the engineering department gave a further referral response today where they concluded that the vast majority of their comments had been resolved. They suggested a couple of items to be included as conditions to an approval, and they had a few new comments that we'll go through as part of our next homework assignment. In particular, we're going to have to produce some changes to the stormwater figures that were initially presented to the board. So we'll do that prior to our next hearing. Scott, is there anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. So at this point, we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
So it just seems that we're down to like the gravel parking and some drainage?
So in some correspondence between myself and the applicant prior to the meeting, it appears as though they may be removing the gravel parking in favor of going back to the paved surface, and we'd likely be altering the stormwater calculations in between your next meeting. But staff is comfortable with the application as is presented minus the stormwater component, which I think we can tackle in between now and your next meeting.
So if we vote for a positive motion for our next meeting?
Yes. If you're comfortable, we'll draft a positive motion, and it'll be contingent upon engineering, the engineering division signing off on the stormwater before it gets to your table next week.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or just?
You don't need to vote for that.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
So for clarity, the next meeting is December 9th.
Yeah. Okay. You're a solid body.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The applicant good with that?
Yeah.
Okay?
We're great. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you in a minute.
We're going to get out of here in like a half an hour, maybe. All right. Third applicant this evening is ASD Cape Cod Holdings LLC, site plan review application to install large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays at 41, 42, 48, and 59 Theater Drive and Zero Boxbury Hill Road. Maps 10-03-001, 163, and 17-01-028B, 014, and 17-01-028, 039. I said 2A, 2B, I just 2B, okay. 17-01-028A, 015, and 10-04-007, 035. Tom?
The notice, Tom?
Where is it?
Your packet with the clip inside your box.
Oh.
On top.
Oh, the big packet.
With the clip. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Large packet, there you go.
Public notice for this project was published on November 7th, 2025, and 36 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. And before we hear from the applicant, I want to make a statement. I'd like to make a statement on the record in my capacity as a private citizen. I am a member of the Cape Cod Country Club 2024, 2025 in Falmouth. In an abundance of caution, I have filed disclosures pursuant to GLC 268A and S23 with my, well, I did it with the Cape Cod Commission, but I'm also doing it here, making the public aware. And I believe that notwithstanding my club membership, I am able to be fair and impartial in reviewing the DRI of the site plan review, and that there is no need for me to recuse myself. If anyone feels that I need to recuse myself, please speak now. All right. Thank you. For the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate the disclosure. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Abam and Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I, along with our design team, am before you tonight representing ASD Cape Cod Holdings with regards to the proposed solar array at 41, 42, 48, and 59 Theater Drive and Zero Boxbury Hill Road, generally known as Cape Cod Country Club. This is the culmination of a long process that began back in, I believe, 2019. We have our full design team here with us this evening, with, our intent is to present the presentation for this project. You're going to hear from my colleague Matt Terry, as well as Manjore Vahara from Pure Sky Energy, Raoul Lizarde from Cape and Islands Engineering, and Brian Madden with LEC Environmental, as well as other members of the team. We're glad to present this project to you, and we'll be happy to field any questions or comments from the board and the public in order to help begin moving this process forward. I'm going to hand off initially to Attorney Matt Terry for a general introduction to the project and start walking you through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, before we take any more testimony, do we need to dim some of these lights for the television audience at home, or?
You certainly can't do it.
I'm not saying to do it, I don't know if we have to do it or not.
I think it would probably be wise.
George used to do that when he sat there.
Mr. John.
Watch what he does now.
No, I'm not going to learn.
She doesn't want to know.
People need to speak up because these aren't microphones.
It's not microphones.
These aren't. So they need, anyone who's speaking needs to speak up.
Still that line of lights. Thank you.
Again, for the record, my name is Matt Terry from the law firm Abam and Clower. Briefly before I turn it over to Manjore, just wanted to give the planning board just a quick procedural history on where we've been and where we're headed. This property was placed in the large ground-mounted solar overlay district by vote of town meeting in 2021. It was a two-thirds requirement, and the article received just about 80% of the vote to include this property in the overlay district, making a large ground-mounted solar array a by right use for this property. Subsequent to that, we continued to work with town staff, Cape Cod Commission staff to refine the project plans. We applied to the Cape Cod Commission this spring, well, I should say we applied to the planning board this spring for site plan review, and were referred to the Cape Cod Commission, went through five hearings with the commission, including the full commission hearing at the beginning of September. The commission approved our project by a 14-to-1 vote, which then sent us back to the planning board to commence site plan review. In between site plan review and the Cape Cod Commission, just last week at town meeting, there was a petition article to remove this property from the overlay district that was rejected pretty roundly by voice vote. And so that's what brings us before you this evening. As a by right use, site plan review is the only local permit that will need other than stormwater, driveway, and building permit. So with that as background, I'll turn it over to Manjore Vahara of Pure Sky Energy to give a more detailed presentation of the project.
Hello, everyone. My name is Manjore Vahara with Pure Sky Energy. Thank you for taking the time to allow us to give this presentation. Really appreciate it and for all the efforts of the town meeting members last week and the weeks before in gathering information about the project and making an informed decision. So just to begin, once again, I'm joined with Raoul Lizarde, who's with Cape and Islands Engineering, Brian Madden with LEC Consultants, and then Lawrence Cook from our team at PSE as a construction manager. Really quickly, an agenda, I'll be going over the background of the project and then doing an overview that'll be shared between myself, Raoul, Lawrence, and Brian, and then just a quick summary at the end. So just to begin, Pure Sky Energy, we have been doing community solar projects across the country for the past, since 2017. We currently have about 44 projects that are active and under construction across the United States. Probably around 12 or 13 of those projects are in Massachusetts, currently active across the state, and that adds up to, well, across the country, we're about over 233 megawatts. And then battery storage is also a common component of our projects as well, especially in Massachusetts, as it's a mandatory, it's mandatory per the state regulations for projects above a certain size that these projects do fall under to be paired with a battery storage system. We are an independent power producer. You know, this, like I've mentioned, we've, with the projects across the United States, we've helped over 9,000 customers sign up for energy and save millions on their electricity bills. And a really important part about the way that we like to do things with the towns that we work together with is to form a long-term partnership, which is kind of built upon that last week, you know, the donation of the land and, you know, working together with the select board and the town to establish that more formally. So then, just going over briefly, an overview of the site as it is, it's 137-acre, 18-hole, well-managed, active golf course, has amenities like a clubhouse, a pump house, paved parking areas, paved car paths, all accessible via Theater Drive and Boxbury Hill Road. On the site itself currently are two housing units. One is located right around this area. It's a single-family housing unit. And the other is the previous cast house at the edge of Theater Drive, which has been uninhibited for tens of years at this point. So it's very overrun. And then we have the pump house that's closer to the Kuna Masip Pond on Theater Drive that brings water into the site for irrigation and I think for watering. Then there's the clubhouse and the maintenance building, which are side by side along Theater Drive. Currently, the sites are zoned as agricultural A, and then the parcel that the clubhouse is on is zoned as business, and they fall in the Water Resource Protection District of Falmouth. The surrounding lands of the project are all primarily Conservation Commission lands. There are some neighborhoods on the south side of Boxbury Hill Road, some residents that live there, then there are also residents that live along Boxbury Hill Road and Theater Drive. And public access, this, currently there is public access that's used through the paved parking area, the trail system that is currently as it is. There's a parking lot on the north side of the site that people utilize to, you know, travel across the site and go to the sliding hill, et cetera. So then moving into the overview of the project, at a high level, this is a 20, these are three separate five-megawatt projects, or two five-megawatt projects and one three-and-a-half megawatt AC project, solar and battery storage. That is 23.3 megawatts DC. AC is what the utilities kind of, that's how they run their numbers, and DC is the size of the system. And when we, the energy is kind of generated by the panels, they get converted from DC to AC so that it's compatible with the local grid. The project area is about 102 acres. That covers all of the redevelopment of existing land use, the landscaped areas and site alterations, and also restoration as well, that's included in that. A part of this project is the permanent conservation of 55 acres of open space, which is, consists of 42 acres of the upland across the site, then there's about one acre of the wetlands across the site on the south array and the west array, and then there's a round pond itself, which is about 12 acres. Then also, this project is proposing to clear about 10 acres. I'll be showing more pictures of that further into the presentation. And about 7.6 of those acres are about upland forest, and the rest remaining are managed tree areas, standalone trees meant to be a part of the course. And then as also as a part of this project, as a result of the 10 acres of tree clearing, we are replanting 16 acres of trees and shrubs across the site to be in compliance with the Falmouth regulations aimed at rehabilitating mainly around the vernal pool, since it's a ecologically sensitive zone and of a lot of importance and its connection with Kuna Masip Pond and Round Pond. And then overall, the restoration around the site is comprises of, you know, a mix of natural communities and habitat covers, open meadow, early mid-successional habitats, forested uplands, wetlands, sustainable turtle nesting habitats, osprey nesting bat boxes, birds in bat boxes. The project itself is a conversion of maintained lawns and paved areas into a native meadow across the site under the panels. The restoration is split into four different sections. There's one which is all existing vegetation, and then the next is vegetation or parts of the site that are currently manicured areas, manicured fairways that will be converted into trees and shrubs. Then there's manicured areas converted into a woody seed mix, mostly perennials, I believe. And then the last is manicured areas like the portion that's right between Round Pond and Kuna Masip Pond that will be converted from a fairway to a pollinator meadow. And overall, this project over the course of 25 years is expected to reduce the carbon emissions by about 285,000 tons. This is a high-level site layout. You can see here, there's the red, which represents the tree clearing, and that happens across the different sites on the south array, it's all bunched together, and that portion is upland forest. Then on the east array, there's portions that are managed trees and fair, more manicured fairway under it. And there'll be more pictures after this to show more specifics of each of these tree clearing areas and what they look like currently. And then overall, each site too has an equipment pad. Since they are differing in size, the south array is the smallest three-and-a-half-megawatt site that has a smaller equipment pad with less equipment in general and is a distance away from the roads. Then the west and east array both have equipment pads. The east array's equipment pad is larger because it has a bit more equipment, one more battery storage container, another, maybe two inverters on it as well, and the transformer and converters as well. And then overall, the sites host these single-axis tracking panels, which I'll also be going more into, more detail about them later on to the presentation. So with that, I will pass it to Brian to just go over the current existing conditions of the site and then going into the restoration and those details. Can I just scroll down on the mouse? Thanks.
Good evening. Brian Madden from LEC Environmental Consultants, Senior Wildlife Wetland Scientist. So we had conducted a natural resources inventory for the Cape Cod Commission, which involved a series of site evaluations over multiple years dating back to 2000. And so just wanted to summarize existing conditions, habitat conditions. The perimeter of the golf course is occupied by forested uplands primarily. There's obviously boarding vegetated wetlands associated with Kuna Masip Pond and Round Pond. There's three isolated wetlands on the property. We had flagged the site back in 2000 and had received an Order of Resource Area delineation approving the wetland boundaries by the Conservation Commission. This photograph you can see here is representative of some of the site conditions of forested areas in between some of the golf holes, where it's a varying mix. Some have intact forested upland where the ground cover is, remain undisturbed, whereas other areas, like this photograph right here, it's been maintained underneath in between some of the golf holes. You have these fringing forested conditions between some of the holes that are otherwise occupied by turf, either fairway, rough, or green conditions, but very typical of Cape Cod oak pine forested upland habitat conditions. Here's some additional site photographs that, just representative photographs throughout the site. If you can see here, some of the wetland areas, obviously Kuna Masip Pond and Round Pond, but the vernal pool that is located, I'll just show it right here, is located in this position right here, in addition to an isolated vegetated wetland that is, was actually flagged within the middle of the fairway. But some of these are the locations of the maintained understories in between some of the golf holes. There's a lot of standalone trees, obviously fringing the golf holes. So as Manjore had touched upon, there's a significant amount of restoration being proposed associated with the project. This plan depicts with the varying coloring scheme, varying restoration aspects being And as he had mentioned, there's 34 acres, a little over 34 acres of the property is being restored that is previously developed, occupied by the turf-type conditions and/or paved conditions, car paths, parking lots, buildings, et cetera. There are a few structures along the pond that are also proposed to be demolished and restored in place. As part of the restoration, there's 16 acres of dedicated forested upland habitat conversion, so proposed trees being proposed in those locations. There's a total of 650 trees that are proposed. And again, the intent of the restoration plan is to provide like a mix of habitat conditions, whether it be forested upland, more shrub-type conditions to meadow, or a mix of those habitat cover types. And that's the varying coloring schemes. There's a significant amount of restoration being proposed in and around the vernal pool. Again, that's this area right here that provides a pretty significant habitat corridor connection between Kuna Masip Pond and that vernal pool. And there's over 11 acres of being, that will be protected and restored in that location. And with that, I'll turn over to Raoul. Thanks so much.
For the record, Raoul Lizarde from Cape and Islands Engineer, professional engineer, involved in this project from approximately five years ago now. So the sites, this plan that we're showing in front of you is the existing conditions of the site. It is a golf course, so there's varying topographic features, and there's a lot of terrain reveal on the site. This particular view that we're looking at is the sub catch basins or sub contributing drainage areas within the sites. All of the site technically flows or slopes towards low depressions within the site or towards either the Kuna Masip Pond or Round Pond. In this particular area, the biggest contributing area in the middle contributes to the wetland smack in the middle of the west array, which is the vernal pool. Currently, there are no catchment features on the property, so all of the runoff from the golf club and the uses on the site runs off into that wetland. The main area where the hole number one is located and the backside of the buildings on Theater Drive, that, all of that area runs off to a low point on the north or east corner of the property. What we propose to do here is reshape the grading on the site to place the vernal pools, but essentially the runoff patterns will stay the same. The big difference in this case is that we are introducing some depression and constructed bait. basins to intercept some of the runoff leading or preceding the final discharge to either the wetlands or to the pond. For example, this area right here, we have created a detention basin. It is going to be vegetated and it's going to be allowed to continue to serve as a natural condition, but it will be a depression that captures runoff before it overflows to the wetland. So it provides some treatment. However, the rest of the site is going to be a meadow, so there is going to be lead nutrients flowing out of this project. The other main area at this location will continue to slope to the low area that's located on the property. It's just going to be regraded for the placement of the solar panels. All of the buildings along Theater Drive will be removed. There is going to be constructed earth berms to provide some screening and privacy to the residents of Theater Drive, but all the buildings are being removed. The residence at this location of Kuna Masip Pond is also being removed. The area is going to be seeded and allowed to become a meadow, a natural meadow. On the south array, similar, we have different contributing drainage areas. They all discharge to low points. One of them discharges to a wetland at this location. The project will continue to do the same. The patterns will continue to be the same, but we have proposed some drainage capturing by drain basins before they actually reach out to the wetlands. The areas that don't discharge to wetland will just continue to slope the land to go to the same low points that they currently go to. The east array will be something similar. The east array is the largest of the three parcels. It is also the flatter of the three parcels. This one has a large low depression at this location that we propose to continue using as a destination for surface runoff. At this, in this plan, we show the proposed grading with the panels and we show that the low areas kind of remain low areas. To the south area of this project, we are proposing a larger drain basin. Again, it's going to be seeded and become natural, but it's going to intercept any runoff that's going in that direction. Along Boxbury Hill, we're proposing some raised earth berms and planting areas to provide buffering and screening from public roadways. And with that, I'll transfer over to Manjore to continue his presentation.
So moving forward, we're going through the landscape plan and the different view sheds for the project. The landscape plan here will show, it shows kind of a mix between the site plan and the restoration plan where you could see there's, you can see existing conditions where the trees are. And then there's also areas you can see in the solid green that is areas to be restored with trees and shrubs. And then the yellow are areas that will be reseeded with a woody seed mix or a meadow seed mix. So this part of the landscape plan focuses on the east and the west array. As you can see, there's these red circles with some arrows. These represent the different viewpoints that we captured for the site, for these two sites. And in the following slide, they'll show those pictures of before and after of the projects, of the project and the existing, how it looks, how it looks as well currently. So on the left side is what it currently looks like. As you can see, you know, there's wooden fences, there's trees in the background, and then when we install the system, there will be some grading in that area. And there's root plantings of trees and shrubs to cover the fence. And this is an example of what it will look like three to five years into the future after being planted. And as you can see, the view of the fence isn't obvious. We tried as much as possible to establish and plan for a lot of buffer between the fence and the road to be conscious of the view shed impacts that it could have. The next picture is looking at the west array, right at the top of Boxbury Hill Road. Currently, you know, there's a lot of forest on the right side that will remain as it is. You can see in the backside over here, this is one of the holes that is abutting the vernal pool area that will be converted and graded to match the 10% slope that we're aiming for. This right here is a, some trees, standalone trees that we'll be removing. So on the right side, you can see we have a path that connects with the current cross path, the cart crossings, to go into the east array. This path kind of goes through and in between some earth berms that will be replanted with trees and shrubs to effectively block the site of the fence and the panels from the This, these, this is a view of where the driveway will be and what it will look like from the road there. As you can see, since it's a driveway, there isn't a way to provide a buffer between the gate and the roadway, so it will be visible. However, around it and in that area, there is significant replantings that we're planting in earth berms to help mitigate the view shed impacts as much as possible. And then the bottom image is further down the site, but still looking at the west array. This is looking towards the clubhouse from the road. This view will be mitigated as well with more trees and shrubs. You can see the path here also continues down here from the Theater Drive area. So just more, just more trees and shrubs that we're planting strategically to help mitigate that impact of the view shed. So then for the south array, we don't currently have, you can see we don't have any viewpoints at this, along this, along Boxbury Hill Road. And that was primarily because there is an existing tree line that is probably 150 to 100 feet away from the road or from the road towards the site that is existing healthy tree line that provides a lot of buffer on its own. But beyond that as well, we're planning to install earth berms and do a lot of replanting and then also the trail, the walking trail that goes around the south array will come up to the driveway area as well and exit towards Boxbury Hill Road there. And then this is an image that I pulled from Google Maps to show what it currently looks like. This is the current cart path crossing, crossway that goes from the south array to the, to hole four. These trees, I just wanted to show that, you know, the dense, there are densely packed upland forest here with a lot of coverage on the ground as well as a healthy kind of long-lasting forest there as well. So we plan strategically to keep that in place to as much as possible mitigate that view shed impact. And then just more information about the project's equipment in general. These are bifacial solar panels, which means that the energy that is generated from them comes from the sunlight, hits it from the top, energy is generated. And then any sunlight that bounces off the ground and hits it from the back, then it's also generated there as well. So these are more efficient panels that we've chosen to use for this site. These are 545 megawatt plant panels as well currently that we're planning. The technology is always progressing and maybe just a few years ago, we were at maybe 300 or 200 megawatt, 200 watt panels and now we're at 500, 450, 550. So the efficiency is getting better. That lets us use less space and be able to generate the same amount of electricity from these types of projects. And then additionally, additionally to the solar panels, these are single-axis tracking panels, which means there's a motor on each table. And by table, I mean, this is an example of a table. It doesn't show the whole thing, but this is an example of what it would look like, the postings, the racking into the ground, how the panel will be placed. And the motor on it controls the whole table, the whole array, and functions quietly throughout the day to track the angle of the sun. And then as well, in addition to the solar panels, there is an equipment pad and on the equipment pad, you can, there will be a battery storage system, inverters, converters, and a transformer. The battery storage system is essential for providing more grid stability. It smoothen, smoothenes power fluctuations and mitigates intermittency. It helps with cost savings and price fluctuations in electricity in certain areas by providing that stability. And it provides 24/7, you know, energy availability in the area. There were some use cases from some of our projects in the summer of 2024 that were able to supply electricity during two emergency events over the summer of 2024 when there are high temperatures and they helped provide electricity to the local community or to the utility, Eversource, to help stabilize that situation. And then I'll pass it to Lawrence to go over the construction phases of the project.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Cook. I am the Associate Director of Engineering, Procurement, and Construction for Pure Sky Energy. I'm going to talk you through the, the construction phases from a very high level. It's obviously a complicated site across three different individual sites. So it's been split into three phases, site preparation, the installation, and then the closeout. Site preparation, we'll probably start with the larger east array and then the move on to the west array and then the south array, who will begin with tree establishing, first of all, the limits of clearing, all of the erosion control and sediment control that needs to go in. Then we'll look at tree clearing, grading, and then there'll be some temporary seeding that stabilizes the ground during construction period. The tree clearing will be timed so that it doesn't interfere with any nesting, roosting, bats, or birds. The temporary staining will be a fast growing cover just to provide the reduction of erosion during storm events. The, we'll move from one site, doing the tree clearing, move on to the next. We will start then on the, on the first site with the post-installation for the racking. So there is some staggering and certain overlap between these three, three sites. So it'll move from tree clearing, grading, to solar racking installation modules and then the, the pad. That will generally take about six to eight months on each site. And then we'll look at the final closeout, which will be towards the establishment of the pollinator areas, the, the buffer zones, the tree, the restoration areas and things like that. And then we'll have an operations and maintenance plan in place to help establish all the pollinator meadows over the next kind of two to, two to three years post-construction because they don't just come up all in one year. It takes, it takes a little bit of work over, over the coming seasons to make sure that they're not, that the wildflowers aren't outcompeted by invasive species and things like that. With that, I'll hand back over to Manjore.
There's no pesticides or herbicides used that we, that we will need to use. We have no need for it. And so just a part of the agreement, I think, with the Kuna Masip Pond Association is that we're not going to be using any pesticides or herbicides on site either. So just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Lawrence. Next is the operations and maintenance plan. So it's split up into two different areas. There's the space within the fence and this is going to be, the battery storage system and the panels have monitoring systems in them and around them, the battery storage. If there's any change in temperature within the container, that will be noticed and it'll be notified to our remote team that monitors the system. And if there is any, there's usually a threshold of temperature that when it exceeds that point, then any local bodies, like the fire department are notified, we'll have people come to the site to look at it so that we can try and mitigate any, to understand what's happening and mitigate as much as possible before, before it can, or just understand what the problem is. So within the fence itself, there's infrastructure maintenance, the access roads, maybe some snow clearing, stormwater basins and drainage controls, making sure that those areas are cleared so that the water flow is always going. Then vegetation management, which is like Lawrence said, there's, you know, a period of time after we establish the pollinator seed mix and the woody seed mix and the trees and shrubs that they need to establish. It could take a few years and it's a part of the Cape Cod Commission's approval, a condition of their approval, that that process is supervised and that it's monitored and that everything, including invasive species management, is contained and actively worked on throughout that process. And then the same goes for wildlife habitat management, making sure that the turtle nesting sites, the birds, bat boxes, and osprey nests are all functioning as they should be, that they're placed correctly, there's annual inspections and maintenance. And then the contractors will be trained to encounter or take care of these areas so that there is no disturbance or minimal disturbance to wildlife. And then in addition to, this is outside the fence, but also something that we have said that we would help with is the sledding hill and making sure that that's mowed as often as we mow the, the sites. The sites will be mowed about one to two times a year to help establish that pollinator meadow and it'll be cut down to about six inches off the ground. Sometimes when the pollinator meadow gets a little overgrown and it kind of goes in between the panels, it can have a significant effect on the power production of it. So making sure that we are strategically mowing them down through the year at specific times, not, you know, in the middle of the summer where the grass, where the meadow will just grow back, specifically doing it at the end of a growing season and maybe at the beginning or through the middle of the summer or earlier in the summer where more growth happens. But we'll be inspecting that to kind of more accurately decide when during the year we should be mowing it so that we can help maintain that. Then stormwater management, like I mentioned above, you know, stormwater basins and drainage controls, all this is meant to be compliant with the Falmouth stormwater regulations. And then, you know, they're also meant to help protect the adjacent wetland resources, the vernal pool, the Kuna Masip Pond, Round Pond, and then the wetlands on the south array as well. And then outside the solar arrays, this is the town that's going to be donated, the open space. This will be the walking trails. A lot of that space is also going to be restored. That'll be within our purview during the establishment process to make sure that all of that is established properly over the course of the next two, three, four years and make sure that it's growing healthily and that the invasive species are also properly managed. But the long-term kind of stewardship of that space will be in the responsibility of the town, maybe the Conservation Commission. But that land ownership, post-donation, like I mentioned, will belong to the town and will be managed accordingly. And then another aspect of the project that, you know, requires some clarification and also some more detailed discussion about is the interconnection. We recently in November, or earlier in November, we executed the interconnection service agreement, which signifies a major milestone in our process. After years of being in interconnection studies through, you know, a regional, from a regional side to, you know, more granular to an individual substation and area, we now have an idea and more definitively what upgrades are going to happen, where they're going to happen and when. There's a schedule that Eversource has that they'll be sharing with us shortly to, so we can work together as those upgrades start to happen. And then on the right side, these are two pictures. One, on the left side is a picture of occurrence. These are live pictures that I took from Google Maps. One, this is on Boxbury Hill Road. This is a representation of a single-phase utility line. This is an example of a pole that will be upgraded to the three phase, which you can see on the right side. The poles on the right side will be, it'll be a combination of upgrading the current poles with some additional support. You can see right here, this wire is called a guy wire. It helps provide support and so then in turbulent weather, the poles can remain stable. With, you know, the additional equipment, they usually take this guy wire and put it more further out so that the, that tension is maintained during inclement weather. And as you can also see, it is utilizing equipment on the same wooden pole as it is. This project also will have six new poles along Boxbury Hill Road that will connect with the existing utility lines. And these will be overhead lines on the street. When, the, the way that the lines will connect with our systems is from the street, they'll go underground and that'll they'll go underground, and that'll connect with a pad mountain connection, pad mounted connection, and then that'll go into our... Where the equipment pads are located on the site. And then the next part is the community solar process. This is a big aspect of the project. It's a state-regulated aspect of the project. We can't go through with having this established as a project without getting a preliminary statement of qualification, which is the first step that happens after we get a... Or after we get to the point of building permits for projects. Usually for... To be able to apply for this, you need to have all the permits from the town, from any other relevant bodies as well, as well as an executed ISA. Once we have that, then, you know, that'll probably commence... Around that time will be the commencement of the construction and that aspect of the project. But then in the meantime, we'll be looking to fill the subscriber types for this project. Currently, we're at... For low-income subscribers, there's two options. There's... We could either do 15% of the power production goes to... Contributes to 100% of low-income eligible folks, 100% of the supply rate on their bill. And then also, the next... The other option is 40% of the power production will go to 40%... Will provide a 40% discount to the low to moderate income eligible folks. Currently, we're proposing... Well, the second option for the low to moderate income, there's two options according to the state regulations. There's 15% at 100% discount and 40% at a 40% discount. Then for the community share, the mass market subscribers, these are... This will take up about 35% of the project's production, and that will offer 20% discount to those folks. These are local residents, anyone who's an Eversource customer, small businesses, nonprofits can also be eligible for this as well. And we're currently... And then the last... The last two off-takers or potential off-takers are municipal off-takers like town hall, fire departments, libraries, hospitals, et cetera, municipal entities that need power. And then other off-takers could be, you know... Pui is an example of an off-taker that we've been reaching out to to see if they'd be interested in having some of their power come from the site and be discounted through the system. But they're considered anchor off-takers. And they will be limited to two per project at a maximum of 50% of the power produced by the system. So with this, there is a significant discount and kind of savings from electricity that local residents, local businesses, the town, and local organizations can benefit from for the project. And just some statistics that are relevant for Barnstable County. I know that, you know, Falmouth has about 22,000 housing units. About 67% or 70% of those are permanently... Have permanent residents in them, and the other remaining are seasonal residents. And that accounts for about 16,000. This project will be able to power 2,200 homes a year. And that is equivalent to about 10% to 15% of the total housing unit's energy demand. So just a statistic to kind of give you a little perspective of the impact that the project could have in the local energy distribution system. And then the other one is, this is more for Barnstable County, but currently all the sources of energy generation in Barnstable County adds up to about 378,000 megawatt hours. After this project is implemented, that'll go up to 407,000 megawatt hours. And so this project contributes about 30,000, about 29,000, and represents about 7% of the total county electricity generation. And then just lastly, the summary of some key points of the project. It's, once again, some of the detriments are the tree clearing, which is necessary for us to be able to establish these projects. And then the fence, as well as a seven-foot fence with six inches underneath, that will... It may modify the movement of the larger wildlife, like the whitetail deer, coyotes, maybe some mid-sized animals as well. But for the most part, the smaller animals like chipmunks and skunks and squirrels will be able to travel freely under the fence. Other benefits of the project, like I said, this provides clean, local, and carbon-free energy to the local Eversource grid in Falmouth and across Massachusetts. It provides cheaper and renewable energy for local residents and local communities. The battery storage system also provides a lot of stability and a lot of stability in electricity supply and also prices in the area as well. Of the 137 acres, 55 acres are going to be permanently conserved. 42 of those acres is uplands, and which is double what the commission regulations were requiring. And public access will be remained through walking trails and sledding hills across... Well, the sledding hill on the north side of the site, and then walking trails that will travel all around the site. About 57 acres, which this space represents where the fenced areas are, will be converted from fairways to pollinator meadow with the solar systems above them. And then the replanting of 16 acres of forested uplands and... Which improves the biodiversity. A lot of that focuses around the vernal pool to establish that ecological connectivity between the vernal pool and Coonamassit Pond. The space between Round Pond and Coonamassit Pond as well to establish some more ecological diversity in that space and allow for species like the... I know there's a popular turtle that even I've seen on Hole 18 that travels between the pond and the vernal pool. That will be very well taken care of with its own turtle nesting habitat and a lot of space in between to be able to travel freely without risk of any human interaction between Coonamassit Pond and the vernal pool. Additionally, there's no traffic or transportation impacts post-construction for this project. During construction, there will be movement of the trucks that will be used to help move the soil from different parts of the site. There's a significant reduction in nitrogen loading that this project presents from a conversion of a current golf course to a solar, community solar farm. This amounts to about 6,600 pounds of reduced nitrogen across the site into the watershed. And I think a part of the referrals was to the sewer department. And I know Amy Lowell also went into some more detail about the impacts that could have on the local projects that are in Falmouth. I know... And then also, like Barwell mentioned, stormwater management runoff features that will be established to help manage that water to go in... As it goes into the Coonamassit Pond or different wetland areas and make sure that it is... That there are more stormwater features in place to help manage the runoff across and off the site. Then the substantial setbacks that will... That are in screening from the road that we've, you know, been thoughtful and intentional about to help mitigate what that looks like from the road, to reduce the view of the fence and the panels and the equipment pads. And then just overall, you know, providing ecological stewardship and maintenance by us within the project limits and some outside over the course of the lifetime of the project. And that's it. Thank you very much. And I'm not sure what the next steps are, but open for questions.
Just on what you were saying, I thought you said... I heard you say that this is equivalent to like 7% and you said of the county's energy use? Or did you mean town?
County, Barnstable County.
The whole county? That's a good thing. Okay.
Before we do questions, are you done with your presentation?
I am.
Mr. Terry? Then we're going to take comments from the staff, and then we'll ask questions. And then we'll go to the audience.
I have a question, too.
You do? We have to go with the staff first.
I have to staff.
Okay, there's just a few comments that Jed and I would like to make for you. Just a reminder, as Matt Terry said, that this is a byright use, so it only requires site plan review from the planning board. This is... The solar is a Dover-protected use, and it may not be unreasonably regulated. Also, any additional requirements that are more stringent then or inconsistent with the bylaw must be connected to the protection of public safety, health, or welfare, and must be supported by facts or information in the record and cannot unreasonably restrict the project. There are a couple of things in your staff report. We went through the bylaw of the required documents and everything that had to be submitted. And there are only a couple outstanding items that were not addressed, such as lighting and signage. And we still need to contact or talk with the fire department about emergency response plan. Also, before we start, the applicant has requested an extension of the deadline to February 27th because it's already expired. So we have to just take that into consideration, too.
I thought it was March.
February, end of February. March is the year from when they filed.
Okay.
You have anything else, Ted?
She did a great job. That's it.
All right. Also, questions?
Could we hear from the public first?
I'm sorry?
Could we hear from the public first?
No. We're going to ask questions first, if we have any. Paul's answering questions.
Can you pull this slide up again, please?
Sure.
So with the mouse, can you outline the security fence for me on the west array field?
So it's represented right here. You can see the mouse, right? It goes right along here, going north, and then it goes here. And it goes up to here into the north more, and then it comes down. This is the outline of the fence across the site. It's, I guess, more easily signified by seeing the brown versus the yellow or the green or the existing tree line. But that's how the fence goes all the way across the site.
Thank you for taking into consideration like chipmunks, squirrels, the turtles, because they can crawl into that six-inch gap. And you have bat boxes and osprey nests, and they can fly over the seven-foot fences. I was just wondering about the mid-sized animals, how they will be impacted, like fox, deer, coyotes. Miles of fencing in that west array, and you've got the Coonamassit Pond and Round Pond. And those are basically what... You know, that's where they go for their water, right? Probably coming from the Boxbury Hill area north. I just don't think it's environmentally friendly to the wildlife. Would you consider, and I don't think this is... I think this is a reasonable request, where it says number three on Boxbury Hill Road?
Right here.
Yes. Would you consider some sort of corridor? Splitting up those two arrays, those sections?
I mean, I have Brian here to discuss more about the potential impacts to the mid-sized animals. And regarding the question around...
That's miles of fencing there, you know?
Regarding the question around whether we would consider providing a corridor between this Boxbury Hill Road and the vernal pool area and the restoration there. For the mid-sized animals, I think that would cause a break in the fence. I think we can definitely take a look into this until the next meeting and talk about it.
Sure.
And then we can come back to you with a more informed answer.
If you want to speak, you have to come to the microphone. And your name also, please.
Yeah, so...
Your name?
Lawrence Cook, Pure Sky Energy.
To the microphone for the people at home.
Lawrence Cook, Pure Sky Energy. So what we have here is a turning head. So the only thing we'd need to do is ensure that that may need to be reconfigured. But yeah, in principle, providing a wildlife corridor to go through shouldn't be too complicated. It may just require a gate there. It should be possible. We'll set the setting to a minute.
Thank you.
And Brian, did you want to talk more about protections for the mid-sized?
Yeah, good question. So the design of the field, including the perimeter fence, has been laid out to maximize existing wildlife corridors, provide direct habitat connectivity to important habitat features, most notably being the vernal pool being a key feature between Coonamassit Pond and that centrally-located feature. You know, and in its entirety, the site is abutting a lot of conservation lands and where wildlife are typically migrating through the property. You know, those quarters will be maintained. The connections with the surrounding conservation lands will be maintained. There will be some rerouting of larger wildlife, coyotes, foxes, deer, things of that nature. But it won't result in a significant adverse effect in being... There's no permanent impediments that would restrict those type of animals from getting point A to point B. They will get redirected, and there is a fair amount of fencing. But it won't result in a significant adverse effect, given what's being maintained in the surrounding habitat conditions itself. But point well taken, and certainly as they say...
Hopefully you'll consider that. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Over the last couple of weeks, we've got an enormous amount of information to look at. And one of the things that caught my eye was the battery storage requirements of Eversource. And it raised the question whether it was out of the capacity to do that. Can you address that issue? It's a very large array and how it impacts Eversource.
The... So just to confirm, you're asking what is the impact of the battery storage to Eversource's processes and how the utility runs there? The generation of electricity? So I think that would require a bit more conversation with Eversource to confirm the impact of what the battery storage system. We could potentially look at maybe the history of how our systems have interacted with the grid, and if there's been any notable... I know I mentioned those three cases from last summer that provided some benefit in some of the areas. I can try and find some more information for those projects. And just in general, I can take that back and get some more information and bring it back in the next meeting. But I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm talking about.
It didn't elaborate, and you know, have a very large array if they can't adapt all the results from this.
I'm guessing Lawrence has more to say than me.
Yeah, sorry, Lawrence Cook again. So when we submit our interconnection application, we set it based on the AC, so 5 megawatts AC. So what Eversource has done is reviewed our interaction with the grid, with the solar and the battery storage at 5 megawatts DC. So middle of the day, the most that we'll be pushing out is 5 megawatts DC. Any energy in excess of that that is generated is diverted to the batteries that will charge the batteries up during the day. A lot of people critical of solar, it only works when the sun's shining, et cetera. What the batteries allow us to do is dispatch electricity in the evenings to deal with the evening peaks, or at certain times of the year, Eversource may ask that we hold the battery in reserve to be called a con in an emergency situation where all of a sudden there's a spike in the grid. It takes a couple of minutes for a gas or oil turbine to start generating electricity. The battery is almost instantaneous. We're only limited by how quickly the grid will let us go, which is from 0% to 100% in about a minute and a half. So yeah, the batteries help with the integration to the grid because it allows us to dispatch energy when it's needed most, and we're never going higher than the 5 megawatts that they've assessed it at.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I think I misunderstood your question. I think I could have gave a similar answer. But thank you, Lawrence, for coming up.
All right, thanks. Jim, do you want to go next?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Just a question on this slide here. All that greenery, the trees along Boxbury Hill Road, are those trees that you will be... that you will be planting?
Uh, so the trees that are currently, that currently look like trees, right? It's not a green or tan. Those are existing, uh, that's existing tree line.
Could you just show what's existing right now on, on that, just with the mouse, just, uh?
Yeah, sure. So, um, along Boxbury Hill Road is the focus.
Mm-hmm.
So, right in this space right here, this is all existing tree line.
Okay.
Um, then there's some across the street that's existing tree line.
Okay.
Um, this space right in the corner of the site as well, that connects Boxbury Hill Road with, uh, Theater Drive.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all existing.
Yeah.
Then there's, um, this space right here, which is kind of a divide between, uh, Boxbury Hill Road and the, uh, four, uh, four-plex that's here, uh, that's all existing as well.
Okay.
Uh, and that's everything that's really relevant to the, uh, from the point of view of the road.
Okay, and then, uh, in, uh, just, uh, that bigger area in the bill, in the middle down?
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's existing?
So this darker green space, that's all existing.
And that's gonna stay?
That will stay, right.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, notably, there's a hole, there's a golf course hole here already that will be converted from a pollinator meadow, uh, uh, from a manicured fairway into a pollinator meadow, and then, as you get closer to the vernal pool on the, um, east side, there'll be additional restoration, and then a lot of restoration to, you know, establish that ecological connectivity between the ponds and the vernal pool, right? Is this is all, that's all this space right here.
Yeah.
This is currently hole 18.
Okay.
And then the walking trail will be kind of running through that.
Yeah. Uh, so it looks like, uh, there's just a few, uh, holes that need to be filled on the, uh, east array along Boxbury Hill towards, uh, the south end of it, and then towards the north end of it, and in the middle there, and, uh, that's, uh, does it plan to screen that as well?
Yeah, that's right. So this green, um, yeah, let me zoom in. This green right here.
Yeah.
You can see this is, it's hard to see this image, I had to compress it so I can send it over an email, but
Yeah.
Um, if you give me a moment, I can pull up the, the actual I'm sorry, I thought I had it here.
Yeah, geez, a lot of files.
It's a lot of files, yeah. But this space, there's a combination of earth berms to not, it, it raises the level of that space to also, um, uh, you know, add to the view shed impact, uh, reduction.
Yeah.
And then as you go further down here, north, um, this space right here, this is the sledding hill.
Mm-hmm.
There will be some trees and shrubs that are planted at the top of that, which is currently a putting hole.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then as you move down the sledding hill, um, or, you know, folks might be sledding down of it, they won't be, there won't be a risk of them sledding right into the fence. There will be trees and shrubs between a significant amount, that's, this is almost maybe over a hundred feet of buffer between the sledding bowl and the fence line itself.
Okay.
And then it's, uh, similar on the other side. Um, I know on one of the pictures, it looks like uh, right over here, you can see the, the tree line is more sparse.
Yeah.
Um, what the buffer will do was kind of, will kind of build that up, and over the course of the lifetime of the project, these are trees and shrubs, so they'll grow to be, you know, very sizable and be able to provide a lot of buffer, uh, between the road and the system itself.
Because I, I think that's the biggest concern, because right now, you drive through, it's, it's nice, it's country, and, uh, people don't want to be looking at an industrial site, and I, I think as much as that can be mitigated, I think that would, uh, alleviate some of the concerns.
Of course.
Thank you.
Charlotte?
I just want to say, it's a great-looking project, and it will be a real benefit to the town and the people who managed to get it, the discount, the thought and care that's been given to the underplantings, to the animals, all of it's really admirable, so thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
I think for the board, when it's only four years ago that we made a decision to make this part of the solar array, I don't think any of us really envisioned how huge that could be. So when I first looked at it, it was really quite stunning, stunningly horrible, to tell you the truth. But, you know, you adapt. And I did look on, uh, your website to see the overviews of aerial views of the number of arrays that you've done around the country. This may be the biggest in Massachusetts, but it's not the biggest one that you've done. My concern continues to be about the impact on the scenic beauty of Boxbury Hill Road and things that you can see from the pond. People use the pond, you get the view from the pond also. So I'd, I'd like to ask you a few questions about that.
Sure thing.
What are the dimensions of the, the setbacks on either side of Boxbury Hill Road? How deep are they?
Um, so on either side of Boxbury Hill Road, I believe the dimension is a hundred feet from the roadway that the fence line is established.
To each side?
To each side.
And are you planning to put plantings in front of that chain link fence?
Yeah, um, so, uh, that was the, the purpose of these view sheds was to kind of show as an example, um, you know, before and then after. There is actually an image that we have in between this that shows the system as it is without any buffer, but the way that we're, you know, uh, placing the buffer across the system or across the roadway is to help kind of prevent that from being, from, prevent the site from being seen.
Well, I guess it depends on how high those buffers are. I went over to take a look at what you're building, or have built-in sandwich, which is much smaller, and you've covered up, I don't think it actually has chain link behind it. It's covered with, um, uh, wood fencing. I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's over on Katuut Road on
I'm familiar with the project.
Yeah.
Lawrence is probably much more familiar with it, he was a part of the construction process, but
Well, it's got a stockade fence in front of all of it, and between the road and the stockade fence, there's about thirty feet, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably a little longer, yeah.
Native wild, yeah. So what you're, when you can see through the plantings, what you're seeing is a weathered stockade fence.
Hmm.
And that appears, from what you can make out from the road, to completely surround the project. You can see a bit of it, looking through it at the back.
Yes, uh, yeah, I, I mean, the stockade fences have, uh, uh, operations and maintenance issue, uh, especially in an exposed area like this, uh, if you've got a, say, a, a, seven-foot-high fence, uh, I mean, the, the issue, yeah, if you've got a seven-foot-high fence that's four feet in the ground, it gusts of wind, it, it, it's much more prone to be
No, I understand, stockade fences don't last forever. They don't even last fifteen years.
Yeah.
But they, so you would have to be replacing them. So if it's planting, it might have a longer lifetime, depending on what you
Yeah, uh, we'd also have to check closely with the Kunamesset Pond Association, because there would have to be, um, uh, pressure-treated timber that's used in the, in that, and that's obviously treated with, uh, with chemicals to preserve it.
Well, I'm not suggesting that you have a stockade fence.
Oh, okay.
Just that I can see that you're concerned about how
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we, we are concerned, yeah. I mean, this, I mean, I, I, I get that, that the feelings are high, uh, uh, and a lot of people concerned about what it's gonna look like. This has been four years of careful consideration to try and mitigate as much as we can, and, uh, and the, I mean, the ten-foot-high berms and things like that are, are not normal. That, that, that's not a standard, uh, operating procedure for any solar development in, in Massachusetts. You may get a, a couple here and there, um, but not, nothing to the scale that
Nothing like this. And yet, the difference between the sandwich one and this one, another difference, is the height of the top, the high side of the panels.
Mm-hmm.
Those appear to be about, what, twelve feet high?
Uh, they, it's not quite that high. They're, they're probably, uh, probably eight, eight, eight feet, eight and a half feet
Yeah, not much, and these are going to be what?
Uh, well, so, they move, so it's, you can take that fixed point at probably anywhere from kind of six to eight feet, and then they'll tip, so you'll have like two, three feet on each side. So with the single-axis tracker, it, it effectively moves, so they're, they're on a table like this, and then they'll move this way.
So it gets to be sixteen feet high?
It, it won't be quite that high, because it's just a, it's a single panel in, in the portrait. So the, the one that, uh, Manjore showed earlier was, uh, with two, two panels, so we'll just have a single panel, which is about my height, so three foot either side, it'd be pitched up at around, uh, six to eight foot, and then it'll kind of tip three foot in the other. So, yeah, mi- middle point will be about eight foot, and then it will go to, uh, part of the day it will be eleven foot high, part of the day it'll be eleven foot high, and then at night it will move back over again.
And it'd be varied plantings that fit in, that look as if they might have been native.
Yes, it, it's, it's all native, um, uh, natives, uh, native species.
That sounds good to me. Couple of other questions. Are you asking us for any special permits? It didn't seem so.
Uh, no.
No, just the site plan review.
The site plan review? Okay, and when, what are the start and end dates of this? If all goes well for you, at the end of February, what will the start date be?
Um, so we're hoping to also, in conjunction with the, during the site plan review process, work together with the select board to, uh, go through the pilot agreement, the land lease, the land donation, and the, and I think a part of the purview of the site plan review is the decommissioning agreement as well.
Mm-hmm.
We're making sure that, uh, we work together with them, and how long that will take is, uh, I, I'm not entirely sure right now, but the next steps after getting the site plan review would be driveway permits, uh, stormwater permit, um, and then that will set us up to be able to apply for building permit ideally in the June-July timeframe. Um, and then, once we have a building permit, we can apply for the preliminary statement of qualification with the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, uh, and then we can also commence construction. I know there's also some tree clearing time of year restrictions that the Cape Cod Commission, and also we were conscious, we're trying to be conscious about, so making sure that no tree clearing happens over the time in the year when, um, endangered species or, you know, important habitat could be affected. So even if we do get a building permit in the June-July period, we wouldn't start any tree clearing activities until the October period, uh, so to make sure that, you know, habitat is, uh, maintained.
The tree clearing seems to mostly involve the trees that separate the greens, particularly on the east setting, is that right?
That's true, but, you know, even in those trees, there are, you know, it's, it's, it could potentially be home for animals, especially the northern long-eared bat, which is a, uh, endangered species of a specific concern in Massachusetts in this area as well. So, just trying to keep that at the top of mind before we start anything.
And for the grading that you're doing, you're not trying to level it? Are you trying to level it?
No, the site won't be leveled, um, but there are certain parts of the site, I think I could show you a, a section here, right here. This is an example of a, a part of the site that is on a higher elevation, that's also a bit steeper. Um, that will be, the way that it's, the way that we're planning to do it is there are parts of each site that will be taking soil from and will be filling it in to the other part to help provide a more, uh, stable slope, and this, the goal slope is ten percent across the three sites for panels to be placed on. Outside of places where the panels are installed, like the vernal pool area, or, you know, outside of the fence, um, in general, there isn't any grading or significant grading that's, uh, proposed there, just to help with, if there is anything, it's to help with the view shed. And then there is also one section, uh, on the north-eastern side of the vernal pool where, where we'll be doing the, uh, basin to help with the water flow mitigation.
Question about the poles. You're gonna add six new poles?
That's right.
Right. You know, downtown, a really big improvement was made downtown by taking the poles that went down Main Street and putting them behind the buildings. It really changed the whole aspect of the town, much more charming. Is there any possibility of moving the poles off the street and back toward where you're going to be, um, fencing and landscaping, so that they're not on the street, particularly with so many new poles?
Um, for the poles, it looks like Lawrence has an answer for that. I know there's probably restrictions with Eversource, because that is within their purview.
Eversource, they'd have to negotiate.
Yeah, so, we, we have lim, we have limited input in Eversource's design. I know from the point of interconnection with the poles, um, we'll be underground and pad-mounted equipment, but for Eversource poles, they, they're in control of the design. Um, the, the chances are
Trying to go to the picture of the single phase and three phase?
No, I'm trying to zoom in on the pad area.
Ah, so
So the chances are, what Eversource will do is that they will have their interconnection pole here, and then the additional poles will be staggered towards the site. That, that seems to be, uh, normal. They, they will have one, they will have a meter, a recloser, and, um, so the recloser, it, it provides all the, uh, the protection for the utility, so if there's any under voltage or over voltage, et cetera, and there will also be a disconnect switch as well. Um, so those, those poles would generally be, uh, probably along the side of the, uh, the roadway going back towards where the equipment is, but we, we have little input into, uh, Eversource's design.
Mm-hmm. Your purchase and sale agreement with the Freels, it covers their entire property?
It does.
This doesn't seem to.
The project itself doesn't seem to. Yeah, there is a portion of the project that is not within what we are planning. Um, I think that, that is also because of, related to Eversource and the kind of capacity of the utility lines, since the utility lines usually have a, or they do have a thirteen kilowatt, uh, kind of power rating, and because of that, only about thirteen and a half megawatts of power can be running through those lines from a system like this. So, uh, the sites as they are, where the, the east array, west array, and south array were sufficient to, for us to be able to, uh, maximize that line without having to require, you know, another line to be, I don't know exactly how it would have, how, would have to be done, but there are some instances of, you know, Eversource producing like a dual line that connects to the substation directly, um, but these, these three projects will connect to one feeder, which is the same electrical line that will go up, assume it, um, to the substation.
Right up to the navigator club. So what, what becomes then of the land that isn't covered by this discussion on your project? Do you have to come back for a different site plan if you want to do anything with that land?
Sure.
Um, I can speak to that again, Matt Terry, um, attorney for the applicant, for Ma Manclower. Uh, so the current owner of the property wanted to sell a hundred percent of the property, and, uh, so it was a necessary, uh, condition of purchase that we purchased a hundred percent of the property. The acreage in question, uh, known as the fourth hole, it's about seven-point-three acres. Um, it's, um, you'll see it's, um, segregated from really the, the, uh, let's see if I can just find the overall site plan. There, so
You want to do that?
Uh, the fourth hole is up here.
Mm-hmm.
And so you'll see that it can't really, as Manjore was talking about, be incorporated in, into the site design. Um, and so, uh, Pure Sky is the purchaser, has no plans for that acreage. Um, it, it's not part of the project that was submitted to the commission or that's before you this evening. Um, the, uh, um, uh, they are certainly, uh, open to suggestions as to what that property might become, um, and could have conversations with the town or local stakeholders around folks who might be interested in, um, purchasing or coming, uh, uh, up with some other arrangement for a productive use for that acreage, but, um, Pure Sky has no current or future plans for that acreage.
So they would have to be returning to the process in order to get approval for any further projects that would be on that piece?
Depends on what the project would be, that's proposed is, um, if it's by right or
To the house?
Or if it's, um, if it's, uh, subject to a special permit and it would need maybe ZBA approval rather than planning board, but, um, it, it all depends on, I guess, what they decide to, or if they decide to do anything on the site.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's it for now. Oh, I have one other question. The decommissioning conversation, that's for a different night?
We're gonna have several nights, yeah.
Uh-huh, you're in for it. Thank you.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, what, uh, of the inverters and transformers, what level of, uh, decibels does this generate?
So when you are very close to the inverter, it will generate about, Lawrence has an answer for this, but
So the proposed inverter here is, uh, is an SMA, uh, it's sixty-seven decibels from ten feet away. So that's, uh, vacuum clean, uh, kind of sound.
Yeah, like dishwasher in the next
I got it now, yeah, I was, I was trying to remember
But it's, obviously, and, and the pads have been situated, um, where they are on, on the south array, it's in the center of the array, um, the sound would not travel outside of it. Um, from a hundred, hundred-and-fifty-foot, it, it wouldn't be necessarily perceptible.
So, how, how close are those areas, those equipment, to the pond? One of the things, like, sound over the pond sometimes goes for miles. Are they, is it broken, is it closer to the street, broken up by wood, so it isn't...
Yes, so...
Broadcasting over that pond?
Yeah, so that orange area over there?
Yeah, okay, now I got it.
It is the equipment pad, so you've got this, this sort of existing, the area there, this one here, you've got the panels and everything over there, and then on the south array, it's right in the middle.
Yeah, and on the south array too, there is existing tree line that belongs to the Conservation Commission currently that will be maintained as it is.
Okay, I have a few questions also, then we'll go to the audience. To the staff, I looked at the referrals that we have so far, and there was a notation about getting a referral from the natural resource. Do we have that?
We don't yet. We're going to, we're going to reach out to them.
Because it has to do with migration of wildlife, pretty much, okay? And then, Mr. Terry, when you're making your presentation, you mentioned that 54 acres of, I think it was youth, maybe it was not, but 54 acres of conservation land is included, was going to be included to the town here. Is that, I had surgery, so it's not dangerous. So, is the 54 acres going to be donated to the town, whether or not the town accepts all the rest of the land, or is that part of the negotiation with the town?
So, I think based on the town meeting vote last week, the town now has authorization to accept 137 acres. I haven't had any indication in discussions with town staff or with the select board that they'd be interested in accepting any less than the 137 acres that we're offering for donation. That would include the 55 acres that would be permanently conserved, and then just about 60 acres or a little bit more that constitute the project envelope, and those acres would be unrestricted. So, they'd be donated to the town, we would take a ground lease back for each of these three projects from the town for the life of the array, and then, once the arrays are removed, the town can make a decision as to what, if anything, they want to do with that, that sort of generally is...
I understand that part, I just was asking about the 54 acres. Is that going to be donated to the town, whether or not they accept the rest of the land, or whether Pure Sky keeps the rest of the land and, and pays taxes on it?
Sure. I don't think that there's a structure under which we would donate less than 137 acres.
All right, thank you. And then, we made mention of the nutrient loading, how much it's going to save from the pond. Is that the calculation that you used with the Cape Cod Commission? Because I know when we started with the Cape Cod Commission, they made an adjustment on it. Not that it's a big deal here, but is it the same that you started with, or did you adjust it?
There were adjustments made.
And that's what's being presented this evening?
Yeah, because the Falmouth bylaw has a slightly different requirement than the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay, thank you. And it was adjusted downward?
Good evening again, Rowley, started from Cape and Alice Engineering Engineers for this project. So, yeah, it looks like every agency has a different way of calculating nitrogen loadings. The one presented for, for this application is the one in the bylaws, in the Falmouth bylaws. Before, we made the calculation based on the Cape Cod Commission, which is used in the Cape Cod Commission calculations and compares the project before this development and after this development. Same thing with the town regulation, based on the numbers that the town bylaws has the analysis to be based off. And then, I believe the water superintendent, I'm sorry, the wastewater superintendent, sewer superintendent, Amy Low, providing information based on the calculation that we're using the watershed analysis for the great pond review of nitrogen for, for that. So, it's based on three different loading rates, but in each case, the reduction is significantly like 98% reduction of nitrogen.
Which one is less? Which are the calculations? The towns, the Cape Cod Commissions, or you've mentioned...
Right now, I don't have all three in front of me to really compare, but regardless...
Maybe for the next hearing, we could hear that?
Um, we could.
All right, thank you. And then, I was going to ask how many trees are going to be replaced, and I see you mentioned 650. When we talk about 650 trees, can you give us an idea about the caliper of the trees, or, and maybe, is there going to be a mix of oak and maple and Christmas, or what?
I'll defer to Brian on the details of the species of the trees that we're planning to plant.
Yeah, it's a variety of Cape Cod natives, hardwoods and softwoods, so pines, oaks, similar to what is out there right now, but also increasing the diversity a little bit. In terms of size, I don't think that it was specified through the Cape Cod Commission review process. We can certainly provide some clarity on that.
It's going to be part of our process also, right? And I don't know, I don't know if conservation is a good place to start with the, what types of trees there should be?
Yeah, we, as part of the project, for the portions within the 100-foot buffer zone subject to the Conservation Commission jurisdiction, an order of conditions was previously issued, there will be a need to go back and, as I think in the referral, request an amendment to that order of conditions, basically just expanding the restoration effort. We had expanded it to additional holes within the 100-foot buffer zone. But, yeah, through that process, for the initial restoration, subject to their review, there was specifications on the tree sizes and everything, and we can provide clarity to the board.
Appreciate that very much.
Yep.
And then, there was mention of a drain basin. And could you show us what a drain basin is, please?
Well, there are several across the site. Let me see.
I thought that there were.
Yeah, this shows, yeah, this shows them. So, there's, do you want me to go through all of them? There's, there's a few that surround, they're mainly outside of the fence, they surround the property, or they surround the fence line to help with the runoff out the site.
Approximately the depth of them, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, do you know the depth of them off the top of your head?
Why, that could be grass, that could be...
I know where you're going with that.
We'll probably have to come back with a final number on this, on this, because there are several drain basins, as Manjore mentioned, and they probably have different depths. I believe the target depth that we're going for was no more than four feet.
Okay.
But, as Manjore was mentioning, some of the largest ones are at this location, another one is at this location, on this elongated form, another smaller one at this location, small one at this location, this triangle shape at this location, another triangle shape.
That was the largest of them?
Those are the large ones. On the south array, we're actually directing runoff to existing depressions, so we're not actually constructing much of it, except for this one location here and this second location here. One of the things we want to create with this depression is make them into natural depressions, so we're going to be seeding them and planting them and allow the planting to grow natural. So, they will continue to become a depression, similar to other depressions currently on the golf course, will continue to receive runoff water, and just allow vegetation and wildlife to take over.
All right, thank you. And then, there was mention of seeding below the solar, you mentioned seeding below the solar.
That's right.
The pads are going to be approximately three feet off the ground, is that the lowest?
The lowest that they'll be, probably like three to four feet.
The panel, three to four feet?
Yeah.
And you're going to seed it with the pollinator? Is that what it's going to be, or is it going to be grass seed, or?
That's right, it'll be a pollinator seed mix under it. Let's see...
So, pollinator, does that mean it's going to flower? I'm not really familiar with the, with the term.
Some of them might, but for the most part, it'll be, it'll be a mix.
Okay. So, mostly just a grassy type of thing?
Yeah.
Because you mentioned cutting it down.
Yeah, it won't be just one species, it'll be like a variety of species. We have that listed in our restoration plan narrative, and I think Brian's coming up with it right now.
Yeah, it's a mix of both grasses and wildflower species, and we can provide that to the board.
Okay. Again, if you can have some conversation with the conservation people, please, because they really...
Yep. Yeah, they had approved...
I know they've already given a positive referral to this, but I'd like to have their input on it.
Absolutely, yeah. For the portions that have already been approved, the restoration areas, there was seed mix specified as part of that, so we can provide that to the board.
And, and address, when you talk to conservation, ask him about the cutting down, the type of, the time of year, et cetera.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And then, let's talk just for a second about the battery storage. Is that what I see, the, the large rectangular, is there, is there three of them on the site or two?
There's, there's three, one for each site.
And can you, can you share the size of them with us, please?
The specific size of the equipment pads?
With length, height?
Um...
Not, not the pad, but what sits on the pad. Is that a battery storage?
Oh, what sits on the pad.
Is that the battery storage?
There's a few different pieces of equipment, there's the battery storage container, there's the inverter, there's a converter, and then there's also the transformer as well.
Okay. But, they're going to be contained inside of a container, is that correct, or is it going to...
Yes. So, the battery storage container itself, well, Lawrence is coming up, but there's, the way that it's designed is the cells where the lithium ion will be housed, it's, that's a gel that's housed within the cell, and then the cell is housed within a battery pack with various other cells, and then the battery pack is inside a racking within the container itself, and then outside of that is the container.
Right. So, I just would like to know the dimensions of the containers, the three of them?
Yeah, yeah.
Please. Length, length, width, and height?
Okay.
And the reason I want to bring that up, we're talking about screening and, and the location of them, and I just want the, the board to understand what you're proposing.
... Good, keep going. I think you could share it with the one at the beginning.
This one?
Yep. Good.
Are they the same size as the ones in Sandwich, or bigger?
They're similar size, it's a different manufacturer. This is, that is the battery storage. Yeah, so the, the modern design now is rather than it being a, a single container, they are segmented into...
So, I saw containers before.
Yes, the technology's moved on, so the original...
So, no longer, no longer going to be containers?
Yeah, so this, this was one of the first iterations of batteries, which is basically a 40-foot storage container that's converted for the batteries. They are now segmented out into, into designs like this, so you'll have a central collection, one that has all the, the power coming in and out, and then each of these is a, is an individual battery stack that gets wired up together.
Those are the length and the width?
They are eight foot wide.
Total, the total on the pad. Let's, let me ask you what size of the pad is.
I think we've still got some final engineering to do to work out.
Approximately.
But approximately, it would be less than a 40, it'd be a 40-foot container size, so 40 foot by eight foot by eight foot.
When you came to the Cape Cod Commission, you were showing like 75 by 90, and...
That's, that's the entire equipment pad, the area, so the equipment, that's the full extent.
So, that's why I'm asking. Okay. The reason I'm asking, because they're...
But you know, you're asking two questions. You're asking the size of the equipment pad, you're telling you the dimensions of the battery, and then you're saying that that's different to the equipment pad, when the equipment pad has got two batteries, the inverter, the transformer, the equipment racks, the loads, so it's not comparing like for like. It's not going to have a 70-foot by 90-foot battery, that's not what we're proposing.
And just another thing to add, the equipment pad itself is not going to be all concrete. The concrete is only going to be under each piece of equipment individually, in between that space is going to be gravel.
Just so you understand, what I'm trying to get to here is I want everybody to understand the size of them, because you, we look at these little diagrams up there, but they're going to be substantial, and they're close, they're close to the road, so we're talking about screening and...
And so, this is, this is the site that's in Sandwich, you've got a six-foot high fence here, and so it peaks out a little bit, so it's about, they're about nine, 10 foot tall, which is about the size of a high cube container. But, this, this is not 70-foot by 90-foot, that is the entire pad area that's being set aside, and as you can see here, we've got, this is an equipment rack here, these are the DC converters, all separated by gravel on their own individual equipment pads. So, I just didn't want to muddy the water that we're proposing to put a 70-foot by 90-foot by 10-foot high sort of battery stack all at the side of the road, that's not what we're proposing.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. And then, we discussed a little bit about supply discount, discount on the bill for the supply portion of the bill.
That's right.
So, when we talked about 40% off, it's not 40% off of the electric utility bill, it's 40% off of the supply portion of it.
That's right.
Or 15%, or, or whatever the number's going to be. Because when, when we had this discussion at the Cape Cod Commission, there were a lot of questions about it, and the answer finally came out that most people in the town of Falmouth would get pennies off of their bill, their monthly bill, not a substantial. I'm not saying low to moderate income, I'm just saying that it came out that the average person would get pennies as a, as a discount. I just want to understand that.
Yeah, so the way that it is structured by the Massachusetts DOE R is, the, I mean, like I said before, the low to moderate income folks will have 100% of their supply rate on their bills, once they subscribe, paid for through this. The mass market eligible folks, which is, you know, local residents, anyone who's a customer of Eversource, small businesses and local nonprofits, or there's more flexibility there, but the local residents will have a minimum of 20% on the supply rate. I think that's an important, it's an important detail to distinguish.
No, I don't, I don't want to diminish it, but I want to make it realistic.
Yeah, and I want to be upfront and transparent with you as well about what the discounts are going to be.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. We've talked a little bit about moving soil around, and so my board members can understand, there's going to be a substantial amount of, of distribution of soil on the site. And I know you keep talking about the vernal pool, the vernal pool's very, actually very small, isn't it? It's very small. I know you have to keep back, what, 300 feet from it? The Cape Cod Commission has a different regulation than the, than the town of Falmouth. But, the pool itself is not a very large pool, as far as dimensions go, I mean, we just keep talking about it, but, so, but there's going to be an awful lot of soil. And is this a phased-in project, is this a three-year phased-in construction of this site?
So, like Lawrence mentioned, there's different phases of the project, and since this is three different sites, we'll be moving from one phase of one project, so we'll do phase one, for example, we'll probably do phase one of the west array, and then we'll move on to phase one to the east array and start phase two on the west array, then we'll start phase one of the south array and start phase three of the west array, phase two of the east array and start, do phase one of the south array. So, in that way, we're able to be more consistent and efficient with the time, and kind of, you know, that helps with the timeline over bringing it down, but, you know, there's still working together with Eversource and the upgrade timelines that they have, and making sure that when we're coordinating with them, that when we do finally connect with the grid, that everything is in line and all the upgrades are made, and, you know, equipment is properly established, so that there are no errors.
It was my understanding that Eversource asked to have this done over a three-year period, because...
That's not necessarily the case.
That's, I thought I read that, but...
That's, that's within Eversource to determine what their schedule is.
It's a multi-year project, probably.
Construction will be from 20 months, yeah.
Start to finish. Okay. And then, Mr. Terry, we discussed just a little bit about, because Charlotte asked about hole number four, and they don't have any plans for it right now. Pure Sky does not have any plans for it. So, when we went through the Cape Cod Commission, one of the things in purview, Cape Cod Commission is housing, and we discussed that at that hearing, and I'd just like to say publicly, if Pure Sky wants to contribute that to the town, then town will figure out something nice to do with it, was, was also the rest of the contribution of the soil.
I appreciate that.
And there was a mention in the original reading, Melinda, about this is protected from the state, I forget the term that you used.
It's a Dover.
Dover.
Yep.
Just so the, so the audience can understand that, can we get a little bit of clarification? Would you like to make a clarification, maybe town council, is she still here? Is she gone?
So, I mean...
We know what it is, but I'd like people to understand.
So, under master general law, chapter 48, section 3, there are specific uses within the state that are considered protected, and state law basically says that a municipality can't unreasonably regulate those uses. And some of those uses include things like childcare... And some of those uses include things like childcare facilities, educational, religious institutions, and importantly, for this application, solar. Any solar use cannot be unreasonably regulated under the Dover amendment to the master general law, so...
And in particular, because this site is zoned for solar.
That's correct, and, and because it's a solar use.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then, we have a, a letter here from the Lockstead Association, and we're going to read this into the record, or we're just going to say it's into the record, it's a multi-page letter?
Well, it's, it's completely up to you. I, I do think if you want to read that into the record, you should probably also read the three letters or emails that were received today and the previous day. So you have three, three emails and a letter from the Lockstead Association.
Okay, can we read those in the next, the next hearing?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that, because we have a lot of, of people here that...
For clarity purposes, and for the folks who are listening at home, or perhaps sitting in the audience, if anyone wants a copy of, of that correspondence or any of the application materials, just come by the planning office, we can show you how to access that information online, and we can make copies for you.
Yes, and in the planning office, we have full-size plans, not, not condensed plans, they're full-size plans of every page that they're going to do here, if you want to stop by and take a look at it at any time. Paul, did you have another question?
I just have a follow-up, and I'm curious. Mr. Falmouth, we have a major solar array at the fairgrounds, 2.51. We have another one being considered for the parking lots, the St. Shu Authority, near the hockey arena. You're coming under very large array as well, and all these require substantial improvements by Eversource to adapt to these changes. Did you ever consider doing this in phases? You mentioned phases, like east and west phase one, and if you needed a later date, you can do the southern array. Was that ever considered as a way of making this happen, or you got to do it all at one time?
So, I can speak on that. Originally, per the Massachusetts state law for SMART 2.0, there was a restriction to be able to build projects that are abutting each other at the same time, to help kind of phase that out, but with the updates in SMART 3.0, that part of the policy is no more, and so we're, we're able to construct all three projects at the same time, and, you know, like, we've mentioned now, they're in different phases, but it's, in order to be aligned with Eversource, to make sure that the project is completed at the same time as when their upgrades are completed, so it reduces downtime and maximizes the use of the upgrades that they're working on, and that there will be significant investment in, where, that's why we kind of structured the phasing in the way that we have.
Thank you. And just for additional information, every time somebody submits an application to Eversource to build solar, it, they assess it based on what they've already approved. So the first project that was built and is operating and things, they, they assess that based on how that would impact the grid. When another one comes in, they assume that that one's operating and how that fits in. So, the upgrades that they've proposed to, to deal with our three sites, to deal with our three sites. So, once those upgrades go in, which will allow us to connect the first site, connecting the other two sites doesn't matter from an Eversource point of view, because the upgrades that they've completed are to serve all three sites.
Thank you, just curious.
All right, all set?
Yeah.
So then, we're going to take any questions or comments from the audience. I'm like, I think I want to make everybody aware that we're, we're not here to approve or deny this application. That's not, we, we can't deny this application, we're just trying to condition it and making it, making it the best possible solar array we can get for the town of Falmouth. So, with that, if anybody wants to come to the podium, ask a question, make a comment, make a suggestion, just give us your name, and... Yes, sir?
Hi, Nick Lowell, I live in Adam Antsitt in Hatchville. I had a couple of questions. One was, I was hoping you could, with the map, don't go away, with the map, you could explain where the walking trail actually is, it's been unclear to me exactly where that is, and my second question has to do with lighting. Will there be lighting on the site? What will it look like? Can it be minimized? Thanks.
Do you want for all the public to make comments, and then I can come up?
No, we've got one at a time.
While my manager is finding more control, I'll answer on the lighting. Your question?
Yeah.
So, we don't need lighting on the site, they, on each equipment pad?
Insert a microphone, please.
On, on each equipment pad, there will be a service light, so that if somebody's there after dark doing operations and maintenance, they can flick a switch to provide lighting, but if they're not on site, we don't have lighting on there.
Does it automatically turn off, if we forget?
Uh, no, I, I don't believe so, but it's, it, the, the lighting is, it's not floodlighting to light up the whole pad, it's, it would be like your, your spotlighting if somebody walked out the back of your house, only illuminates the, the down area.
Thank you.
And, to speak on the walking trails, I have the restoration plan up, and you can see on this, you have the...
Can you enhance it? There you go.
The purple line.
Can you see that? Okay, sir?
Yeah. So, this line, I know there's an existing parking lot in this area, right off the site, that people usually, usually utilize to, you know, walk the site, go to the sledding hill, maybe...
They go down to the beach, too.
Down to the beach. But this will start over in this area, it goes across the perimeter, through the vernal pool area, and you can see some of this space right here, it's a mixture of cart paths that will, or a path that will remain, so that this area's a little bit more steep, so making sure that the walking path is safe. That goes along the edge of the perimeter of the fence, right here, it goes into and across the round pond to Coona Masse Pond connection, along the edge of the fence, and this down here is Conservation Commission land, which is existing tree line from the ponds, then it goes around, up towards the street, and this is hole five, I believe, so this, this walking trail will come up around here into that hole, through and around these earth berms, and then up to this street right here, and then I know as well that this space right here will be additional walking trail, but it'll be in the view sheds, you can see that it is, but it could be just replanted with pollinator seed mix as well. But this brings, this goes all the way to this area right here, so there's, that is the extent of the trail that goes along the West Array and the South Array, and then there's also the trail from the sledding hill area that works up, works west, and connects with the other trails in the conservation area, across, abutting the property.
Go ahead. Zoom in on any particular area?
Yeah, thanks. So, I know one of the abutter comments that were received via email asks about a looping trail network. There is an existing trail that's not shown here, that extends basically behind the fifth T-box, running parallel to Round Pond, and then looping back behind the green on number eight. That, that provides a connection, and that, that could be maintained as well.
When you say trail, sir, what, is it three feet wide, five feet wide, is it just a natural, because people have walked on it?
That one is probably on the order of like five to six feet wide.
And the ones that you're going to provide, are they going to be built, or are they going to be...
They're largely following the existing cart path network, that's pre-existing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, your name for the record?
Ken Jones, 158 Coona Masse Circle, I'm a resident of Lockstead, so, on the topic of trails, as it was just brought up, I was on the site visit, actually, a couple of Sundays ago, and walking around the site, and one concern I have about the trail is, the way it is right now, looks like it's going to be ending on Boxbury Hill Road. I don't know if you can get the, that slide up that shows, it's a simulated slide that shows, you know, where it's going to be coming into Boxbury Hill Road. While he's doing that, the concern is simply, I mean, I, I expect to be, I expect to be hiking that trail, and I'm really happy they're going to be there, I know many of my neighbors will as well. I just know as a tendency, the hikers is they like to be able to continue their hike. The way that is right now is going to end on Boxbury Hill Road, and the only way to get back safely would be to retrace your route, which a lot of people just won't want to do, and I think they'll want to then, their choice then will be to walk on Boxbury Hill Road, which is not a safe road to walk, to get back to the parking lot. So, my, the question is then, would be to close this loop, literally, so that that trail either could be extended along Coxbury Hill Road to get to the parking lot, or some other way, get it, get it to the parking lot directly, so that it's, it's a safe, it's a safe route for hikers.
And this is the parking lot on Boxbury Hill or Theater Drive, I'm sure, for instance?
The, the one, the existing one that's at the north end of the pond, that people often park at to get access to the...
The one by the four condominiums?
Yeah, it's kind of just opposite, opposite Ranch Road.
By the fourteenth T-box.
Yes, right, right there. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, that's...
So, up above, it ends right into Boxbury Hill, I think that's what he's saying, up above, right?
Yeah.
It ends right at Boxbury Hill Road.
Yeah, it looks like it's about maybe a quarter of a mile between that point where it ends and then the parking lot.
Right, that's what he's discussing. But there's, but there's private property in between, as you can see, the condominium owners.
Is there a way it could be put along the road, as a sidewalk? Just thinking of some other, some creative way of getting, of making it a continuous loop.
Yep, good, good point.
My other question has to do also with the animals, medium-sized animals getting underneath the fence, which currently they can't, so rodents, rabbits, other small animals would be able to, but my concern is, and perhaps I'm just making it up, but I don't want it to become a warren of rabbits, we have a lot of rabbits, and so it'd be nice if the predator and the prey can, aren't separated from each other, if there's a way that some openings, maybe even one or two per array, would be large enough to allow medium-sized animals to get in. I think that might be a good thing, but I, I would defer to the environmental consultant experts. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, just to address that last point on the, the gap at the bottom, it's obviously going to be on undulating soil, we've got, everything's rolled out, so six inches is the target, in other areas, it will be slightly higher than that, up to ten to twelve inches, which would allow for something larger to, to move underneath it, but obviously, the fence is designed to keep people out, we don't want children to be able to get under it, and it's, it's all about keeping unauthorized people from out of it, so there is some movement that we can do, it doesn't necessarily have to be fixed six inches, we can go to about ten, twelve inches without too much issue, anything more than that, and we run the risk of people being able to just slide underneath.
All right, thank you. Next?
To speak really quick on the walking trail, it is tough, because this is, it, I understand the concern of not wanting to walk on the roadway, especially that corner, it can be tough to see the cars that are coming from the, from the west, and it could be dangerous, even if you cross the street, maybe it's dark outside or getting close to sunset, and people are trying to walk back to the parking lot. I don't think there is a lot of streetlights there either.
What, what I would prefer is, the comments that we hear tonight, if you could take those under consideration, then come back and...
Sure, okay.
Because we're going to be here a long time if we don't, if we do all the what-ifs.
That makes sense, okay.
Thank you. Next?
I'll stay up.
Yes, sir, your name?
Good evening, everyone, my name's Dave Moriarty Falmouth, and I, I have a couple of questions for the engineers about the backup battery system and the containment. God forbid, God forbid, that any of these batteries catch on fire, because we know a burning battery becomes a super fun site. We've ruined several areas in the country already with these batteries, they're very dangerous, and I didn't see a containment area for the batteries. Very concerned. Where, where's all the toxic waste going to go if the batteries explode?
I think they were going to take notes and...
Yes, yeah, let's just keep a list, if you don't mind, please, then, the next, next hearing, we can...
Well, I'm not done yet, but I've got a couple of issues.
Okay, good.
As far as the wildlife corridor, there has to be a wildlife corridor, there's no question about it. This is Falmouth, Massachusetts, this is our home, this is part of our culture, there better be a wildlife corridor.
We don't have a referral yet from the Department of Natural Resources for the town.
Well, every time I have to do a project, I have to get it, so it should be, it should be forthcoming very soon.
We want to hear what you have to say.
And I, I definitely want to hear about the toxic waste from the batteries, just in case we have a fire, because it does happen, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
And I want to know what the decibel level is going to be from the closest home in the middle of the summer, when the batteries are drawn down and everything is working as loud as possible. Is it going to be more than sixty-seven decibels? I think so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Next, yes?
Vicki Lowell, Precinct One, doesn't really matter here, but I'm just wondering about the veg, all the revegetation, and we've, for the, both the pollinators and the trees, we've just been in a level-two drought, and what, how is that going to be irrigated, and to get it started, because those first couple of years are, are critical, and there's nothing worse than newly planted trees that die, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Lynn Shad, Precinct Three, and I just want to commend Pure Sky for their environmental stewardship with this project, and also to, also thank for bringing reduced discount rates to the Falmouth residents. But I have two questions. One is with regards to the seven-point-three acres that currently is kind of in a questionable area, whether it could be considered that those seven-point-three acres be included in the donated land that the town is already getting? And the other is a little one with regards to the fencing, if native vegetative vines could be considered to be put on some of the key areas of the cyclone fencing that might be more visible to the street than not, and then, they might not grow, they won't be there right away, but they can grow up, and we know how vines grow around here, they could, you know, almost obliterate those fences in those sites, so, that's what I wanted to suggest.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Supposed to be more people. Any more? Anybody else? Okay.
So, we'll get answers to those questions for the next meeting, for the next iteration, we're going to be discussing the, what are we going to be discussing? The grading plans, landscaping and water sheds, decommissioning and restoration and land clearing, so those, we're going to break those up into the next meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that you try to break up the conversation a little, so, you know, in my mind, the natural progression would be to what Bob was just describing, maybe taking a meeting to talk about the grading and the tree clearing, and the open space that would come, you know, be permanently protected, and then at a later meeting, perhaps you're talking about the landscaping and the view sheds, and then perhaps items like the signage and the lighting, et cetera, those types of things.
Yeah, so...
Charlotte's raising her hand, so I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we'll break that up in maybe two more meetings, take several of those topics at one meeting, and several at, at a second meeting.
We'll, we'll see how it goes, it'll be, it'll be two meetings anyway.
Okay. Okay.
And, and possibly everyone could get their decision from the Cape Cod Commission so we can see what conditions.
It's in your packet.
It's in the packet, okay.
It's in, it's here.
All right, great.
We actually had it for tonight, John. I just wanted to, I'm assuming no issue, no issue is closed until we're done. So if we wish to go back to revisit things that were said tonight, we certainly can do that.
Yes.
So it's good to take them in order, but we can go back.
Yes, thank you. Jim, did you have a?
Well, I just, I think we should, we also need to stay focused on the limitations of the Dover Amendment and conditions we can put on this site. I mean, I've heard a couple of people asking for, oh, we'll give the seven acres there or do the, I mean, what are, give a threshold of the kind of conditions we can put in that are, that the state will let us do, but we are limited because of that amendment.
Well, that, that piece of land that they're asking to be donated isn't part of the project, so ultimately, I mean, you can ask, but it's not part of the project, so it can't be conditioned.
Okay.
We, we understand that.
Yeah. I just want.
I'm sure everybody does, John, the audience. I mean, I heard a couple of requests for some pretty big things.
Well, we can always make requests.
The, the, the three emails that came in have been forwarded to the applicant, so although we're not reading them tonight, it would be nice that maybe if you guys had some answers to those concerns at the next meeting as well, so that we don't have to keep going back and forth. We can read them and then maybe get some answers at the next meeting.
Okay.
John?
Yep.
It's my understanding and based on the material that was sent out for this meeting that the restrictions through the Dover Amendment perhaps, but in general, on what we're allowed to talk about, health, safety and welfare. And welfare is a very broad thing.
Exactly. Okay, so we're going to continue this hearing?
Yeah, I, I would suggest that you have a conversation with the applicant to ensure that they would have the professional folks that they want at the hearing when you're describing or at least discussing these items.
Okay.
And for our ability, so as you, as you know, this application, so, so the public understands as well, this application came with approximately 60 attachments.
Yeah.
And that's an awful lot of paper. So what we're trying to do is not print multiple copies exactly of the same material. So if you can sort of tailor the conversation, we can limit the amount of paper that we are printing.
Save a few trees.
Save a few trees.
And keep what we have.
So I think it would be helpful from our perspective to have our next date and then what some of the subject matter, the specific topics you'd like us to cover and that'll allow us to make sure that we have the appropriate personnel here to address it.
Okay, we can do that.
I think the first conversation you might want to have is the whole idea of tree clearing and the grading. That's just my suggestion.
Okay.
But if there's other topics that you would like to, to discuss at the next meeting, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Speak now or wait till the next meeting and then bring them up.
Yes, of course.
So what, when do we want to continue this to? What's a good date?
I would suggest the, consult with the applicant, but the next meeting date would be December ninth.
And then after that, it's possibly December 30th if the board is available on December 30th.
About the 31st.
I've got plans.
Make, make it really difficult. Okay.
December 30th is not a good date. You know, that's right before New Year's. People leave town. People come into town.
So then you're waiting from December 9th all the way to January 17th or 13th? So there's a whole month and a half that you won't have a meeting.
All right.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
All right. That's good information to know, but for now, we're going to set up for December 9th. You have something else, Paul?
No, are they in agreement?
Oh, that works, yeah. Tree clearing and grading. It might make sense to talk a little bit about open space because that dovetails well with those two topics.
And maybe we can have the referral from Natural Resources by then. Do we have the ones for the fire department yet?
No.
Not yet.
Okay.
And then just answers to the questions that were asked tonight possibly, just so folks can get their questions answered.
Okay.
One item, if I may, that the board, as you know, when you have site plan review, you have the opportunity to visit the site. So you may want to have a conversation with the applicant about what that might look like, if you want to do it as a group site visit, if you want to do individual site visits. I would suggest at least at the minimum that where you visit the site, it would be at those, it just so happens that the landscaping plan is shown up on the screen, perhaps at those view shed areas to, you know, self, sort of help orient what you'd be looking at in the future, but it might be a good idea to talk with the applicant about that, if you're interested.
Okay.
John, if, if we visit the site, it would be very helpful to have 100 feet marked off. You know, 100 feet, not everybody knows what 100 feet looks like, particularly out in open spaces. So it could be marked off at the view sites?
I wasn't able to participate in the site visit that Manjore noted that happened, I believe, last weekend, if that's right. Again, that might be an opportunity for the entire board to walk the site and experience the site if the applicant's interested in doing something like that.
Yeah, we definitely invite the board to walk the site. I just wanted to remind you though, that it is an active golf course and during the week that they do function. I don't know how it could impact maybe the players if we were to set a 100-foot line. I don't know, I don't know how that would look. Could you tell me a little bit more what you're expecting on that or?
Well, from where you have the little dots, out from there, there'd be like another little flag. So you could see, oh, this is 100 feet.
Okay.
And how far is that exactly? So it's not a lot of obstacles for the golfers.
Okay.
And those would be very hardy golfers at this time of year.
They're out there.
It's a good point. No, okay, that, that, that's definitely a lot less of a scope than I was thinking, but yeah, definitely some flag points to show for these different viewpoints. Are there any other particular parts of the site that you all would be interested in looking at or this site as a whole? It, it would take approximately, probably at least two hours to walk around the whole site.
Can I give us golf courts?
Actually, yeah, I think we could, we could try to coordinate that, but it would just require some time in advance to work together with the landowner and the, the current, the current staff at the course as well.
If we're going to do it, we've got to coordinate that through the staff.
We do, we do it all together and I.
I have to look at my calendar and.
Yeah.
I'm sure everybody else does also.
Right.
So we'll look at our calendar and let you know about that.
I've been to the place three times.
Just a question for Jed and Melinda, does that have to be a public meeting? Is that noticed?
Yes, if they all go together, if there's more than three, then it will be publicized.
Yes.
Have to be.
Yes. So we'll have to make the, we'll have to discuss this. Okay, I think we're all set. If you're all set, we're all set.
Thank you very much, yeah.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And we, we still have a hearing going on, so if you're going to discuss, please, down the hallway or out the door.
Mr. Chairman, before the solar folks leave, you have to vote on the decision deadline extension.
Oh, yeah.
So they're asking for an extension of your decision deadline to be extended to February 27th. So we just need a motion and a vote.
Make that motion, Bob?
Yeah, I'll move that we extend the deadline till, what was the date?
February 27th.
February 27th.
2026.
2026, yeah.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're very calm today.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And we, we still have a hearing going on, so if you're going to discuss, please, down the hallway or out the door.
Mr. Chairman, before the solar folks leave, you have to vote on the decision deadline extension.
Oh, yeah.
So they're asking for an extension of your decision deadline to be extended to February 27th. So we just need a motion and a vote.
Make that motion, Bob?
Yeah, I'll move that we extend the deadline till, what was the date?
February 27th.
February 27th.
2026.
2026, yeah.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're very calm today.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're very calm today.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
They're not commiding, they're very, very nice.
Look at some pretty gas in there.
Oh, that's true.
Let me sit over there, I'll sit here. Probably move my head down.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Yes.
We have diversity first and tonight.
Looks like he's leaving.
Okay, the next agenda item, public hearing. The applicant is Joelle Jankira. This is a definitive subdivision plan application and special permit application for a four-lot planned residential development, PRD, at 428 Carriage Shop Road. Jed, can you read the notice into record?
Sure can. Notice that this application was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on the 11th of November and the 14th of November of 2025, and 42 abutters were notified by regular mail.
Now, we want the applicant to provide a summary of the project and that will be you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
has been, that's been in excess of what was required, has been utilized at a further date. But in this case, Mr. Wankera is suggesting donating the open space to the town. We have requested some waivers from subdivision control bylaw. This is a relatively short street. It's less than 500 feet, so we're requesting waivers from sidewalks and from street lighting. Basis for that being, again, it's a small four lot subdivision with little traffic generated on a street of less than 500 feet. Just this afternoon, we received the staff report, and, staff report actually came yesterday, but received the engineering comments from the engineering division just this afternoon about 4 o'clock. So we have not yet had the opportunity to respond to those comments as of yet. We will certainly do so shortly. They're only requesting, I think, pretty minor revisions to the plan, a few requests from the staff report as well. But we've reviewed the comments in both, and those are all addressable and have every intent of doing so. So we're viewing tonight as something of a reintroduction, a continuation of our preliminary subdivision plan that we did a few weeks ago, but wanted to introduce the project to the board, note that we've received referrals from engineering and from the staff, and are able to make those revisions and edits and address those comments and concerns, and look forward to addressing any questions you or the public may have.
So start off with some questions, okay? Start down there, Charlotte.
Looks to me as if you addressed our main concern. You've reestablished the lots. There are now going to be four lots. Still one larger lot at the back, but it's really responsive. Thank you.
So to get to that back lot, there's going to have to be a driveway that runs along the back of the lots next door to the west, I guess, or north?
No.
Right off the circle.
So right.
Oh, you get the circle here, but if.
Can I see here?
Okay, I'm looking.
It's easier to see here.
How come I don't get that?
That's the old.
Well, look, it's right there, too.
Yeah, I know, I can't see that.
Because of the reflection.
Okay, okay, I was looking. Yep, okay, okay.
That's what we asked for.
Yeah.
I'm glad I was able to address that question, Mr. Leary.
No, I was looking at the old one, because I was looking for the new one and didn't find it. Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
My only comment is, you know, I've been on the planning board a long time, and I also walk around and looking at lots and subdivisions and everything. We've been doing this as a town to save open space for many, many years. This cluster is one of our main tools to save open space. And there's hundreds of them around town. You don't even notice them anymore. But if you look at the plans, you all of a sudden see these pieces of open space around them all the time. I think it's a great way to save open space and not have huge subdivisions.
And I think it's important that when we can, when we have these open space parcels, be contiguous, and so we're preserving.
Well, that's why you get the bonus lot, too.
And it's, you know, if you, I don't have the GIS map, but if you zoom out, it basically provides, including the country club, provides open space almost effectively from Sandwich Road all the way here. It's over a mile.
Thank you. You're up, Paul.
No, I have no comment.
I have no comment either, so we'll go to the audience for public comment. Anybody like to speak at the podium? Go ahead, sir. Just make sure you state your name.
Okay. Michael Manyadis. I live at 437 Carriage Shop Road. I don't speak for all the abutters, but I'd like to thank the applicant for working collaboratively with us after we met a couple months ago. There was a discussion, and to see the response and a plan that we think would be in benefit of our part of town is really good to see. So just an abutter in favor of this. The landscaping plan was great to see from the road as well, that there's some thought to, as you're coming down Carriage Shop Road, how the entryway to this subdivision will look, so just an approval, so thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Go ahead, sir, in front. Just state your name.
Yeah, I'm Dave Compton. I live on Compton Drive, which I think abuts the back of it. Now, where's the entry? How do you get into the four lots?
So, sir, right here is, if you zoom out a little bit, this is Carriage Shop Road, and this is the intersection of Hayway. So there'll be a new road installed, which will be Honey Lane right here. We've named it Honey Lane, which will come in from Carriage Shop and provide a cul-de-sac entrance to the four lots here. So it's a few hundred feet up from the intersection of Hayway and Carriage Shop.
Yeah, there's the farm.
Just beside the farm.
I tried to get into that. It's so overgrown.
Just like, you can lose a lot of vegetation.
I think, seeing if I have a locust plant.
Pop the GIS map, it'd show them.
So I can pull up the GIS. That would be.
There we go.
So, sir, this is, again, this is the intersection of Hayway and Carriage Shop here. This parcel right here is the one in question. So there'll be a new road installed that'll come in off of Carriage Shop, provide a cul-de-sac here to give access to the four lots. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name. You get up there.
Bob Baker. I'm an abutter at Crosswind's Way. I just have a question on the procedure for the open space. How does all that happen? When does all that happen?
Do you mean the donation of the land?
Mm-hmm.
That would be part of the condition of the decision, and it would occur after the planning board issues the decision. And so they would donate the land to the town. I believe in this case, because the town would be accepting land, they would have to go to town meeting to accept it. But we can confirm that with Town Council's office.
Would that be in the next town meeting, or that?
Ideally, yes.
Ideally, it would be in.
If required, if required.
Wouldn't it have?
I'm fairly confident anytime the town takes land, they have to, town meeting has to approve that, but don't quote me.
Okay. What happens if the town meeting says no?
Good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's a few ways that could be addressed. The land could be outright donated to the town, which I believe you're correct, Jed, that any disposition of land generally requires a town meeting vote. So that's one possibility. The other possibility would be to place it under a conservation restriction through Conservation Commission or the 300 Committee. But placing a conservation restriction would have the same effect as donating it. What we're not doing is keeping it as association land. So it would be permanently preserved, whether that be through a conservation restriction or through a donation. The restriction might be the easier path, now that I'm saying it out loud.
Yeah.
Ma'am, just go ahead and step up to the podium, please. Just talk into the microphone.
Can you speak to us now?
Yeah, ma'am. Can you state your name and just ask a question? Thanks.
Sylvia Compton.
She, Ms. Compton, I don't mean to speak to you, ma'am, but was asking if it will interfere with Compton Drive. Now, where is Compton Drive, ma'am? Down here? No. So this land here will all be open space back here. So if you look at.
Because we're right behind.
So if you, this is Compton Drive right over here. All of this will be open space. So our road will be at the complete opposite end of the nine acre parcel.
Okay, so you won't be going through here?
No, nope. There'll be no, we'll have, we will have as little impact as humanly possible on Compton Drive. So if you look here, what we're talking about is up here, and this area back here will all be open space. So our access will be off of Carriage Shop, not off of Alexander Booker. Yep, no, we're going to be coming from probably, let's see, well over.
1,000 feet away.
Yeah, 1,000 feet away, give or take. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so now we're looking at a motion to approve the waiver?
Well, so, if I may.
Yeah.
So the density bonus calculation is a question in my mind. So Attorney Clower mentioned that the qualifying event for the density bonus, meaning the applicant's ability to obtain the density bonus, refers to the donation of the open space. However, the section before it, and again, this was part of the conversation in the preliminary stage, is about the math. And so part of the preliminary decision, the preliminary plan decision, was having the applicant indicate the math works for this development to get that fourth lot. And so I just posed that question.
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but. 240 9.8G.
You say that like I didn't know it. I didn't, so thank you. So.
And specifically number one.
Mm-hmm. So what it says is, if a proposed planned residential development incorporates land identified in the Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan or the Falmouth Local Comprehensive Plan, open space element into the proposed open space, and that land is part of the regional or local green belt, walking, hiking, or biking network, the maximum number of dwelling units permitted within the planned residential development may be increased by 20% over that allowed by 9.8F and 9.8G to a maximum of four units. You can have a maximum of up to four units. So what we have is a three lot by rights subdivision with a 500-foot road. So at 20%, where the math is, we typically don't round down. However, when, in this instance, because there, it would only allow for one, I think that it is appropriate to round up to one, as opposed to if we had, say, a 10 lots of division, and we're trying to get, or 11 lots of division, and trying to get an additional 20% lots, that would, you know, we're not going to round up to three, but I think it would be appropriate to round up one to one in this instance to provide for a bonus lot on this parcel.
So ultimately, and I figured that's what was happening, ultimately, it's up to the board to decide on that. And I agree that, at least in terms of the math, you would traditionally round that number up. However, what it does do is it increases that 20% past what's traditionally allowed. So I just caution the board with that. Understanding that we are in a housing crisis, I can see the need to have additional lots here, especially small ones. I just caution the board when making that decision.
Can you do the math? Tell me the decimal points we're talking about here?
Point six.
Six.
Point six six, sir.
So more than half.
That's plenty.
Like I said.
I agree, Charlotte. So, I mean, you know, here's the alternative, right? The alternative is you have a three lots of division with three much larger lots.
Right.
And that's not what I think the town wants or what the applicant wants to do. What we're doing is, and we're still preserving 67% open space. So I think all of these, all of these matters are taken in the abstract. None of these are precedent setting, because every application is unique on the specific facts that are before you. This is a very specific set of facts where what would be allowed is 0.66 of a lot, which we obviously can't do. But I think in this instance, that should allow for one bonus lot. And that's obviously the board's discretion, but I think that the benefit there and the overall project that's developed because of it is a better project.
How much effect would it have if that larger lot was shrunk down?
I mean, I don't think it would make a significant difference to the board's decision, because, sorry, bear with me. Like we talked about before, you know, we have a three lot by rights of division, which allows for, you know, three acre lots, two and a half acre lots. Even the larger lot, we're still just at over one acre here, and then the rest of these are 15,000 to 20,000 square feet.
Put that other plan up for a minute. You just showed, yeah. So that's our alternative.
I mean, that would be, because if we don't get the bonus lot, there's no point in doing the planned residential development and preserving the open space.
So this would be a regular subdivision, then?
Yes.
So, okay, so they're not asking for anything from us at all? If they make, they could ask for other waivers, but.
We'd be asking for.
This land would go all the way down to Compton Lane and exactly as we see. Okay, thanks. I understand.
Okay, Charlotte.
Could we ask for a draft of a positive motion for the next meeting?
I would, we can. However, I believe that there are some comments in the engineering referral that need to be addressed. And maybe some additional waivers might need to be requested. There's nothing major that we saw, but there are some things that need to be cleaned up. So I suggest that the applicant respond to the engineering referral and give engineering time to look at it, so it's all cleaned up. But we can do a draft, draft a positive motion if that happens. We just need to know how long the applicant would need in order to get that done.
So a lot of what I'm going to say is aspirational, because we are, you know, tomorrow's effectively the end of the work week. And if we're being realistic, tomorrow at noon is probably the end of the work week for most people. So I've been speaking with Tim Santos. We think we can get you what you need by next Friday the 2nd, which would be the deadline for the hearing on the 9th, Friday the 4th, which would be the deadline for the hearing on the 9th.
Okay.
So that is our goal.
Okay.
You got to get up.
Yep.
It's the rules. Everybody has to do it.
Yeah, you're on TV, so.
Now, these four lots, they're not like divided equally, like two acres each out of the eight acres.
Happy to address that, sir. So if they were to do a traditional, what we call a grid subdivision, it would be divided relatively equally, two to three acres between each lot. What they're proposing is what's called a planned residential development, or otherwise known as a cluster subdivision. And in a cluster subdivision, you basically show what you could develop using traditional minimum lot size requirements, and the bylaw allows you to use a much smaller lot size. So instead of a 40,000 square foot or an 80,000 square foot lot, it's only a 10,000 square foot lot. So they're taking the same density, three lots, or in this case, four, and using a much smaller footprint to utilize those lots. So they're preserving the other six acres as open space, and that's the area that'll abut your land at Compton Lane.
So is this smaller than the one acre? I know the area where we live is, you have to have an acre in order to.
Yep, so we have to establish that we could satisfy that one acre requirement. And, but under this provision in the bylaw, they allow you to do, to develop a smaller footprint in order to preserve more open space.
Read off the lot sizes for them. Just tell them the.
Yeah, so the only lot size that's over an acre is Lot 4, which is 50,000 square feet. Then we have 15,022, 15,245, 15,048, and then the rest is open space.
So you need to vote to continue both the definitive plan and the special permit to December 9th, and vote on drafting a positive motion, right?
So we need a motion for that?
You need a motion to.
I just want to make one, just to include it. We usually talk about lighting. We didn't mention it. We're kind of fast here.
So that's one of the comments in the engineering referral. Well, actually, they requested a waiver for.
Correct, that's what I heard.
Yeah, they requested a waiver from streetlights and sidewalks.
Okay, because we usually ask for dark sky lighting, but if they're not putting it in, we don't worry about it.
So we can, again, get all the comments situated with them and engineering, and then if everything's okay, we can have, we can have a draft motion ready.
We usually, we do the dark sky, I mean, we don't want floodlights. We want lights in the house that shine down on the ground. It's a standard.
Yeah, I think, so we're not, it's not site plan review, well, it's not site plan review, because it's a subdivision plan.
Okay.
So typically, when we talk about dark sky compliant lighting, it's when we're talking about the design of a building or design of a project that has multiple buildings.
But when you're not putting any lighting in lieu of it, sometimes they put it on the houses, so it's still talking about lighting.
So, I mean, I don't think, if the board is inclined, and if you're, if the planner feels you're able and wants to include a condition in the decision that houses will be dark sky compliant, I don't know if that's possible. We wouldn't be opposed to it. I'm just not sure if that's the appropriate venue.
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction over single-family homes.
Well, they're asking for a waiver on streetlights, right?
Yes.
And usually when we ask for, I mean, I think that opens the door for us to ask for the lighting restriction, I mean.
Well, typically, that would be sort of a postlight, not necessarily lighting that would go.
I just like dark sky lighting as much as possible, that's all.
So what I would say, Mr. Fox, is Mr. Wankera is an experienced developer and takes a lot of pride in producing excellent work, and he's going to be spearheading this project, and I'm sure that he will be doing everything in a dark sky compliant manner.
Okay. What's the next thing that I need to do?
You need to continue the, both the definitive plan application and the special permit application to December 9th.
Will we continue the definitive plan and the special plan application and draft a positive motion?
Okay, can I get a second?
To December 9th?
December 9th.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? The aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Be animus.
Thank you. That's a good project.
Thank you.
And best wishes to everyone for a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And you too. Thank you.
Tom, you want to continue? Keep this thing moving? Oh, Laddie O'Gore, I know him well, yeah. I know him real well. I rode the bus with David for.
What'd you do?
So in Boston, I know it, didn't he work for a film company?
Because of touching golf, because he made.
Did you use it?
Yeah, we talked and talked.
Did you have to use this? Yeah, okay. No, we're still in meeting.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, John, let's wrap this up.
Okay. All right, planning board discussion. Planning Department report.
We have nothing to report this meeting.
Nothing? After all this time?
Well, we figured it's getting late.
Yeah, that's the time between town meeting and now.
Committee reports.
No committee reports.
Yeah, I have one brief report. The town is considering a funding source for water and wastewater projects. Naomi Law made a presentation to the Select Board on November 3rd for something called the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund. And it was again presented at the Water Quality Management Committee meeting on the 12th. And it took a copy of it, and it's included with your area here. And the intent is to consider a tax surcharge to fund water and wastewater projects similar to the CPC. It has to need town approval and so forth, but several towns have already done that. And there's a couple estimates in here what kind of money would be raised. But town meeting would need to vote for the surcharge and the amount. In the case of other towns, Mashpee implemented this at 2%. Sandwich also 2%, and Dennis at 3% to raise funds for water and wastewater projects. I think it's important to be aware of it, and you may want to look at this, and we can discuss it at a future date.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Paul. Tom?
I'll go away to the next meeting.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Angry force from Europe? No. Okay. Rob?
No, nothing.
Yeah, okay, all right, great. So December 2025, planning board meeting schedule.
Right. So as Melinda alluded to earlier, your meetings in December include December 9th and December 23rd. That's your second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. So we figured December 23rd was certainly not going to work. That's the week of Christmas.
Might be like a bah humbug meeting, yes.
So your alternative would be to, as Melinda mentioned, schedule a meeting on the 30th, which seems somewhat controversial on that.
You could, you could make a plan now.
Would it be, would it be, would it be the solar?
Well, that will depend on the conversation that you have with them on the 9th, but I would imagine that the answer is yes. And so the question is, do we feel like...
Well, we could do it on the 9th with solar.
Yeah.
And then do something in January, if everyone's not gonna be on the 30th.
Right.
How's everybody else feel about the 30th?
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Yeah? Can you zoom in from wherever you're at? Make a phone call? Okay, we'll do the 30th.
I mean, we won't be voting on anything on the 30th.
So she would need to watch the hearing to catch up on whatever you missed.
It's recorded.
It is. It's not live, but at some point.
You can do it.
Don't you people celebrate New Year's at all? I mean, it's a national holiday.
No, I'm invited by, like, nine.
Keep in mind, it's the day before New Year's.
Yes, it's the day before.
Yeah.
Eve. It's the day before New Year's Eve.
It's nothing special.
You said the first one in January would be the 13th?
Correct.
Why would it not be before that?
Because it's the second Tuesday of the month.
All right, so we already voted. We'll do the 30th.
Okay.
All right, 30th it is.
30th is okay.
Right?
Yeah.
You just have to tune in afterward.
Yeah.
All right, so that's our schedule for December. Anyone have any future agenda items?
Jim, you mentioned at the last meeting that you were gonna have one this meeting.
Yeah, I'm not gonna bring it up now. I wanna go home, please.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. We, I have to...